The 21st day of August 2007 is a little after 5:30 PM. As we do all meetings, we will start with an invocation by Thomas Caruba, pastor, followed by the pledges of allegiance by the mayor of South Padre Island and the city manager.
God, that you showed us, Lord, with this hurricane and things, and we thank you, God, that your hand was on us. Father, we just lift up this meeting here to you today. We pray for your counsel, your knowledge, your might. God, let everything be conducted the right way. Give us the mind of Christ and everything that we need, and we thank you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Mayor, city manager.
Honor to Texas flag. Honor to Texas flag. A pleasure to be here today. Texas, one of the eight of God, one individual. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I guess they do it backwards at South Padre, but it's all right. I guess so. Anybody sign up for public comment? I'd like to take the opportunity to make some public comment regarding the recent near hit that we anticipated from Hurricane Dean. First of all, let me thank members of the Commissioners Court that participated and were forever diligent and vigilant with us during the last four or five days. I want to thank our Emergency Management Coordinator for his efforts, Pita Pulveda, Yvette with the Health Department and her staff, and Pete with his staff. And also, special thanks to Laura Martinez with the Brownsville Herald for attending, and Alan Essex, too, I see him in the background, for attending every meeting that we had in terms of any time we were going to disseminate information to everyone. They were present, disseminating information to the population. I would tell you that I thought that overall, if we had to be graded from an F to an A, I think we were a solid B. I think there's some areas that we probably need to fine tune, and that's the reason that these drills, these real-life drills, are better. We had a mock drill back in June, and it's just not the same. It's not the same doing a mock drill, even going through the exercises and the buses, et cetera, the National Guard. You know, you don't get the adrenaline flowing when you're in the middle of, or perceived middle of, a potential hurricane of this magnitude. So this drill was, we were able to identify the solid spots that we have. It also demonstrated the cooperation with all the municipalities, their EMCs, and Cameron County. That was a good learning experience for me. I think everybody learned something. We had a meeting here Sunday morning at 10:00 AM with almost every municipality and school district, just to re-coordinate our efforts in terms of the pickup points, what we were going to do. We discussed the evacuation hub. A lot of the things that occurred during this exercise were a direct result of a task force that Governor Perry implemented a year or so ago, and I was honored to be on that task force. But everything from deploying assets quickly, like he did, deploying fuel, like he did, setting up shelters in our community cities of San Antonio, Laredo, wherever they needed to go. I realize that there's going to be some criticism in terms of, maybe there was some overreaction because the storm didn't hit. I will tell you that it takes several days to mobilize the type of resources that the state of Texas mobilized. It's not something that you can do when the storm is 24 hours away or 36 hours away. It's something that we had to do four to five days away. If you recall, on August the 18th, around 11:00 AM, that storm had a beeline to our community. And it really wasn't only until about maybe 24 to 36 hours ago where a true determination was made that we were pretty much almost out of harm's way. But if you all would see the cluster modules that all the forecasters were given, there was two or three modules that still held us in a precarious position. Specifically, we were still going to be a direct hit. Thank God that we did not, but we were able to mobilize our local resources, and I believe that overall, I thought things went very, very well. We learned from it. I will tell you that I think a lot of the population felt as safe as they could. There's nothing that we could do to alleviate the flooding that was going to happen, but at least the saving of lives, which is our ultimate goal, is what was foremost in everyone's minds. So I also want to thank our Hidalgo County counterparts and Willacy County counterparts for their help. In addition, also, I want to thank Cameron County's population, because they did everything methodically. They were following instructions. They went out, bought what they had to buy. There was no sense of panic, and so I'm very proud of our community for doing what they did. So with that, any member of the court that wishes to make comments that they've experienced over the last several days, please feel free to do so. And after that, or Johnny, would you like to make some comments? You want to wait till everybody gets through?
I'll wait till the Commissioners make their comments, Judge.
Okay. Start wherever you guys, over here.
Judge, I know you thanked everybody, but I'd like...
And Public Works.
I want to especially thank Public Works, because they were called in, they were there 24 hours, and I know that the Sheriff's Department, I called them, and they came forward with the participants, and they worked diligently and hard, and so I'd like to especially thank them for not staying behind and coming forward and doing their job.
My thanks go out to everyone that participated in it, county folks, city folks, everyone in the state, actually. When we were on the conference calls every day at 10:00 AM and 4:00 PM, we were also on the calls with people from Lubbock, Amarillo, El Paso, all up and down the coast, San Antonio, Austin, most of the cities in the state, and they were all extremely cooperative. And as the judge has indicated, they came out in force to provide what we might need in the event that we had the hurricane. So the cooperation was there, and the state handled it extremely well. Obviously, there were some hiccups along the way, but as the judge has indicated, those we'll be looking at to improve. I think there's always room for improvement. If he only grades it a B, you know, we need to figure out how to get it to an A, and I think we'll be doing that in the near future. And I know that the judge has called for an assessment, I believe, to see where we can make improvements and work better with everybody, and everybody can work better with us. So we're looking forward to that, and we're looking forward to having a hurricane-free balance of this year. Appreciate everyone working with us on that.
I would just agree with everything that's been said. I think that we were fortunate, but I do want to give thanks, Judge, to yourself and the department, and all the departments of the county that were involved in the process. You know, everyone lent a hand in doing what needed to be done to make sure that things flowed the way they needed to flow. It's very evident that the organization was there. It's very evident from the state level that the support was there, and it was a pleasure to listen in, to be part of, and to see how the meetings were run and organized. The Saturday, Sunday morning meeting that you had with the majority of the folks of this county that represented the cities and the schools, I've run into a number of individuals since that meeting, and all of them had nothing but good comments to make about their sense of feeling comfort in knowing that things were in place in case something came our way. So, you know, there was a good feeling between all of the folks as to what their roles were, and the only thing I would say is, all those folks that got sandbags, you know, save them, because we're still not in September. End of the hurricane season doesn't end till the end of November.
November.
Sorry. November. I keep wanting to add sooner or later.
He's trying to hurry it up.
Yeah. So, you know, I mean, save the sandbags. They don't go to waste if you keep them in a nice shady place that's cool and dry, and it saves a whole lot of work from a lot of people in having to redeploy those same assets to do the same job. So, you know, we encourage you to keep them safe, and again, thanks to everyone involved in the process.
I think the one comment that I'd like to repeat, that Commissioner Garza said, everyone was doing what they were supposed to be doing, and I think, I feel that that's what made it work so successfully. I join the court in congratulating you, Johnny, and of course, the judge for his leadership. I had just started my second term, but I had never gotten as many phone calls, people thanking us. And I have a quote from someone that said, if he was not here, to please say it, and I don't see Jack Gibson from Arroyo City here, but he called and he said, he lives in Arroyo City, and of course, that's an area that's very vulnerable to a hurricane, but he called in behalf of a lot of people that he'd been talking to at Chili Willie's, which is their gathering place, and he said, the county did a superb job. And he says, congratulate the judge for us. He says, we felt safe, we felt that we were being taken care of, and they specifically mentioned the fact that they appreciated that we took sandbags to their site, because a lot of their population could not get, did not have the transportation to come to the warehouse. And in reference to that, I'd like to give you some totals, so you can have an idea of the kind of activity that was going on. At the Precinct Four warehouse, the total sandbags given were 6,704, and there were 939 cars that came through our gate. And in the outpost, which people really called in to thank us for, and I need to mention, Judge, we have a lot, we had a lot of volunteers that helped us, so that our crews did not have to stay at the site at our outpost, which is Arroyo City. We had sandbags out there, and Minnie Martinez coordinated that for us. And then in La Paloma, Johnny's food store cooperated, and that's where we had them, and he supervised that for us. Mr. Prado in Los Indios, Ram Rivera in Santa Maria, and Armin Arguin in Las Yescas. And as they had all mentioned, it was all this cooperation that took place that was really energizing. And as we met, and I saw all these different departments and the cities and different agencies gathered together, working together, you couldn't help but be energized in seeing that type of unity. So I definitely want to thank all the volunteers that helped us. I especially want to thank my assistant. We have advisory committees in my precinct, and that's over 100 members when you bring all those advisory committees together. And he called, every single one of them, twice during this time, giving them updates and information as I got it at our meetings. So I want to thank Mike for doing that. He did a tremendous job. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. Johnny?
Thank you, Judge. Commissioners. Judge, we've been planning and organizing for this type of an event for approximately seven months. There isn't enough time to go over all the things that I'd like to go over. I'm just going to give the court a brief overview of what transpired a few times, and of just a few things that we did do. Every department head of Cameron County, I think, did an excellent job. The leadership of the state of Texas, and you, Judge, and the Commissioners Court, we were able to organize something that has been planned for a very long time, and it's not until you see, you can do all the planning you want, and it's not until you see everything coming together that you realize that all those long days and the plans worked, came together and to work very, very well. Due to the rapid deployment, or development, rather, and movement of Hurricane Dean, Judge's Division of Emergency Management began to set up the Emergency Operations Center here at the Dancy Building. Judge Cosco then began to, or ordered our office to contact every mayor, city manager, emergency management coordinator, and other representatives and officials from cities here in this building, as well as school superintendents. We did that. They were able to listen in on the conference calls, and I think that those state-sponsored conference calls make all the difference in the world, to set the tone for what we're doing here in this county and in our sister counties. While all that is happening, the Multi-Agency Coordination Center, the MAC, in the city of McAllen, stood up. The city of McAllen was very helpful in what we were doing here at the local level in Cameron County. Over 200 members of the Cameron County Health Department stood ready to mobilize people out of harm's way if need be, as well as Sheriff Lucio and some constables of this county. I think that if we had to mobilize what we believe to be approximately 130,000 special needs evacuees from this county, I think we would have been able to do it and do it well. Like the judge says, I think that flooding would have been one of our biggest concerns, but I think the part of the plan, the state plan, to mobilize all those resources, the military, as well as all those buses, I think that would have worked very well. They were staged in San Benito. Our evacuation hubs were set up in Cameron County, Hidalgo County, and Willacy County, all simultaneously. The rapid deployment of those resources were invaluable. Ms. Agdora de la Garza also provided some much-needed assistance in our Emergency Operations Center by providing some volunteers. I'd like to thank her as well. I'd like to take questions, if you have, for me, Judge and Commissioners, of anything else. There's some, a few pictures of while I'm talking, I'd like to show about five or six photographs that just show the amount of troops that we had on the ground in San Benito, military ambulances, and over 650 troops. The commanding officer on the ground asked me to express her thanks to you, Judge, and to the Commissioners Court for doing something that is, that they rarely get, and that is a hot meal. I want to thank you for that. You did not want them to eat cold MREs, and we fed 650 troops three meals a day while they were here, and they appreciate that very much. We had C-130 aircraft at three of our Valley airports as well, ready to move our hospital patients and any nursing home patient out of harm's way very, very quickly. There were six of those aircraft at our Valley airports, ready to go. Pets were also, the arrangements for pets to be mobilized, as well as folks, were also part of our plan, Judge. And we had the school buses from local jurisdictions, as well as other jurisdictions from around the state, that sent buses to us, not only with pet carriers, but with food and even some toys for children came along in those buses. We'd like to thank them publicly for that as well, Judge. It's a shot of some of our buses that were at our staging area in San Benito. We had over 200 buses ready to go here for Cameron County, and in our sister county of Hidalgo, they had several hundred additional buses, several thousand, actually, additional buses, ready to go to move our people out of harm's way in Cameron County. I think every department head in this county deserves a big thanks from us, from me. Everyone came to the table and was ready to go. There was no problems that I foresaw with any department, and I appreciate that very much. It made our job a lot easier. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Johnny, and I'll tell you, a special thanks to the, of course, everybody deserves a lot of credit, but I think the school districts, you know, not only locally, but throughout the state, I think there was 46 school districts, if I remember the number right.
Yes, Judge.
Forty-six school districts that volunteered their school buses. They got them ready with supplies, food, water, even toys for kids, you know, ready at a moment's notice. They were on their way. They made it to San Antonio. So this really was a great exercise, and for those of you all that are not familiar with the way this hub was going to work, every school district in Cameron County committed buses and certain pickup points in each community and the rural areas. I think there was 32 pickup points, if I remember right.
Yes, that's correct, Judge.
Thirty-two pickup points, and they would be leaving every hour on the hour, taking our folks to the San Benito hub, where they would be screened, looked at for medical, you know, just basically screened, identified, processed, keeping families together, given a round-trip ticket in the form of an ID bracelet where they were coded, so that everybody knew where they were, what bus they got on. No families were going to be separated. They got scanned when they would get on the bus, they were going to be scanned when they got off the bus. If you remember with the Katrina and Rita, there was folks that were displaced, that it took them months, weeks to find out where they were, and that was not going to be the problem. We also have to congratulate Jack Colley, who's the Division of Emergency Management's chief. He's under the Department of Public Safety and the Governor's Office. That's the guy that you want to have, you know, in charge of something like this. The guy is, and I see Mayor nodding your head, you know, because Jack is a great guy. I've known him for a number of years when I was on DPS, and this guy is a guy that you want in charge if there's going to be an evacuation of this magnitude. And also, obviously, Governor Perry's leadership for not waiting and deploying these assets as soon as this storm was a threat to the coast, he was ready to go with this. So let's hope that we can continue with free and no storms on the horizon. Let's hope it ends in September, Commissioner, but we're hoping, but if we have this threat again, we'll be ready and we'll be prepared and just, you know, God bless Cameron County and the state and everybody that is involved. Thank you very much.
The last slide, Judge, I want to show is just the rain band that this is at 5:21 PM today, is a radar. We're still not completely out of the woods. We're going to get some rain, and the National Weather Service says that we possibly could have some bit of tornadic activity and lots of rain, so we can expect that in the next 12 to 24 hours.
Okay.
Yes, Judge.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mayor, you going to say anything? Because you were almost in the brunt of it, so...
Well, actually, you know, I want to thank Commissioners Court Judge and Commissioner Benavides for the help that we did get and the help we would have gotten if it would have followed all the way through. I do want to thank, and you made comments about Jack Colley, and even through all of the Emergency Act, I don't know where, what kind of a brain this guy has, because he had numbers off the top of his head, but he even had a lighter side. There was a question at some point during one of the conference calls about the main hub and where people have to go or go through, and he made the comment, he said, "I don't care if you're going to..."
Heaven or hell?
"Heaven or hell, but you're going to go through San Antonio to get there." And I thought that was quite a good humor side to him in a very difficult moment, but I agree with you.
Well, it was. I will tell you that there were some, and I won't mention names, but there were some individuals that wanted to deviate from the plan and start kind of doing their own thing, and I basically said, "No, that's not going to happen." And I think he probably got a wind of something like that as well at a different level, and his comment was, "I don't care if you're going to heaven or hell, but to get there, you got to go through San Antonio."
Right.
And that was his comment, and I thought that was a good...
It was appropriate for the time.
It was appropriate.
But I want to thank you, and I think the state, if we've got to do this for real, in other words, if we do get one, I think you're going to get an A for covering it.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor. Appreciate it. All right. There's a couple of items that have been asked to be taken out of order because they need to go, but let me go to the, Mayor, we're going to go to item 25. I know you needed another meeting to go to. Item 25, discussion and possible action regarding the proposed annexation of designated area of county property south of the town of South Padre Island. I asked, we appointed a committee, if you recall. I think members of that committee are here. Would you like, Ruben, or whomever?
Faith.
Faith is here somewhere. Sorry, walked in with her baby. There you go. Hi, Faith. And just kind of give us your, not a recommendation, but your thoughts on the committee.
First of all, let me echo what everybody said. It was really an impressive show of force for the hurricane evacuation. I think that we're hopefully never have to use it, but if we do, at least we're prepared for it. First of all, let me thank you, Judge, and the Commissioners Court for allowing participatory government. There is a trend to, in government circles, for elected officials to decide what they're going to do without ever bothering to ask the citizens who it's impacting any input whatsoever. Ultimately, though, the decision is yours, because that's what you're elected to do. You are elected to make those decisions. We had a meeting. The mayor was there, Pete was there, David was there, I was there. We had a couple of other individuals from your staff or from the county, as well as from, that you had appointed, Judge. The concerns that we had and we related amongst ourselves were pretty much the ones that we had verbalized before, and that was the extent of the annexation, to what extent did it really cover. And apparently, there was some confusion or discussion or not really well-defined, because the day that I left here at our last meeting, I was under the impression that the annexation included up to Dirty Alves, and when we were at the meeting, it turned out that it wasn't up to Dirty Alves, but that perhaps that might be included as well. So the extent of the annexation, however, was very clearly demarked that it was not within the Isla Blanca property, within the area where the vast majority of the community go, that it includes only Schlitterbaum, Sea Ranch, and I believe, one of the trailer park, or the marine, I beg your pardon. Thank you, Mayor. The other issue that we had, and again, would ask you to ponder and think about, is the legal ramifications that your decision will be making. The mayor was very impressed with the fact that the issue that was going to be coming before you today only dealt with that small portion of Isla Blanca. However, we believe that that may have eventual legal ramifications down the road, and so we ask you to seriously ponder that and consider that. The end result is, we don't have a recommendation. That's really, I mean, what we wanted to find out was what was going to happen, what were we really going to be looking at. We really don't have a recommendation for you. We only have a word of caution, and that word of caution is that understand what it is that we will be doing, what we will be giving up, and what it may portend in the future. The authority that you give up today, will it in fact impede the county's, not cities, but the county's ability to manage its affairs on Isla Blanca? And most importantly, remember that it's not just South Padre Island, but it is Cameron County that this treasure, this jewel that we've talked about in the past, belongs to over 200,000 people in this county. And with that, we don't have a recommendation. We just ask you to ponder, to consider, to thoughtfully consider what it is that you are going to be giving up in return for what the city will be providing us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor?
Thank you, Ruben. The request has been on the table for a good number, well, I say a good number of years, about three or four years. It has never changed. It is only annexing businesses that exist. Personally, I don't feel like you really give up a whole bunch. You retain the leases, you retain control of the leases. If the place burns down, whatever goes up is your decision. We certainly are not involved in that. We have zero control on what is done with that land. All we're asking for is those businesses that presently exist, we would like to collect the sales tax... the sales tax that they potentially can generate, and hopefully more, once they come into our fold and get advertised through our efforts. And that is really all we're looking for. And I'm hoping that, you know, we can come to that agreement. I really have nothing to add other than what has been said in the past. I don't have anything to add, but I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
I think Ruben has something to add. I've forgotten.
You know, my problem is that sometimes I can't read my own writing. And one final comment. Apparently, someone decided that they wanted KURV to do a poll of the annexation. And Ira and I were on the road when this was going on, but we had called in, and Davis, who's an old friend of mine, that around 4:30 on the day that the poll was being taken, there were sixty-seven percent people that were against the annexation and thirty-three percent that were for it. Of course, you know, most people are, you know, when they hear that, they're not really sure of what it means. And I think that was the whole purpose of this exercise, in hopes of being able to inform people and to keep people informed of what's going on in Cameron County and in county government. Thank you.
Ruben, I think that this court, I think last week, we had some discussion about some issues related to Andy Bowie. And I think the whole court made it very, very clear that our position today is that we want the public involved. We want them to know we're going to be reaching out, as we did here. I will tell you that had your committee come back and said, "We do not support the annexation," I would not vote for it. But by virtue that you have no recommendation, it's, to me, you're inferring to me that you don't have a big problem with it either if we go forward with it. It's kind of neutral. It's not, you're not against it. You're not really for it. But just caution as to what the ramifications are if we do do it. So thank you for your work. And Faith, tell Pedro hello. Thank him for his participation and everybody else. So with that, do, and Mayor, anything else? Any member of the court want to say something?
Just be more than happy to answer any questions, if there are any. We, you know, just want the Commissioners Court and the people in Cameron County to understand that there are no ulterior motives here other than the sales tax. And again, I'll continue to emphasize the fact that you retain full control over what's done with that land.
All right.
Thank you.
Do I hear a motion?
I move at this time, Judge, that the annexation of that portion as designated by the survey up to the gate at Isla Blanca Park, that we go forward and annex that area. I understand there's a question as to Mr. Salasares' restaurant coming in, but I understand that a letter should be forthcoming from him. And if so, if there's no opposition to it, to include Owls, Dirty Owls Restaurant.
I'll second that.
What was the location? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
That's Dirty Owls on the island. It's within the area that we're referring to?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, there seemed that, for some reason or another, there was some question initially on the Dirty Owls property. And I later found out, and Pete, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that I think part of the problem was they may not, they were not going to be there at some point, and so it wasn't included. But now they are. Dave Friedman did speak to him, and Dave said that he had no problem with it. However, if Commissioners Court would prefer to have that in writing before they approve that one in particular, if it can be done subject to that letter, we can also work with that. What I was hoping is that that wouldn't prevent us from moving forward on what had already been presented and discussed. And I think that's what Commissioner Benavides was...
Was it part of the survey or not?
Pardon me?
Dirty Owls was not part of the survey.
Not initially, no, because they weren't, there was a possibility it might not even be there.
So it was not part of the survey?
No.
Okay, we have a motion, the second. Any further discussion?
In the motion, Nista.
I don't know, Commissioner. Your motion was to...
To annex that area that is designated in the survey, to include, if we get a letter stating that there's no opposition, to include Dirty Owls Restaurant into the annexation.
Okay.
Can we do it without a survey legally? Ruben? So we have to have a survey of the annexed area before it can be included?
We, all we're going to do is give consent. We're not going to do any, we don't take, if the city takes the annexation, they do it, and they will ask us at appropriate time for our consent.
We will do the survey, in other words, once the letter is delivered to you appropriately, with his acknowledging that he's got no problem with it, we'll go ahead and...
I would like to see the survey...
Well, why don't we do this? Why don't, Commissioner, why don't you amend your motion just to annex?
That area.
What we know for sure right now, that survey. If we get correspondence later to do Dirty Owls, bring it back. Will you do that as a separate deal?
I've got no problem with that.
Okay? So you want to amend your motion to do that?
Okay, I make a motion.
That's your second, okay? Just what we have in place, okay? No more further discussion, no more, any more further discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Thank you, Mayor.
Judge, Commissioners, I want to thank you very much.
Okay. I think the DA and the sheriff want to take another item out of order. Item twenty-six, discussion and possible action regarding an unmarked vehicle policy. Let me, well, where this originated was, y'all have a memo that was passed out. I got a memo from the auditor's office expressing concern regarding the number of unmarked vehicles and the inventory. Now, what you have in your packet does not include any identifying correspondence about which vehicles there are. So if someone from the auditor's office is here that wants to kind of go over that?
No, we really wish you would table that item.
I'm sorry?
We'd rather you table that item.
Oh, you want to table the item?
Yes.
Okay, thanks for the notice. Do I hear a motion to table?
Motion to table.
Oh, let me ask you, why are we tabling the item?
With the discussion with the sheriff's, sheriff and the DA, they really don't think we should discuss this in open court of confidential nature of some of the information.
Okay, well, can we discuss it in executive session? No?
Well, it'd have to be an agenda item or...
No, I know, but I don't even think, even if you placed it on...
Well, it would probably be better discussed with individual department heads instead of...
Well, but the Commissioners Court has to adopt a policy in regards to the unmarked vehicles.
Okay.
Now, the memo that we got does not identify any vehicles, so I don't know if we're, how we're violating any type of undercover work.
Well, they're afraid something would come out.
Okay, can we have somebody come up, I guess from the DA's office or the sheriff's office, and tell us what the problem is in having open discussion? Somebody?
They're the parts of departments.
Yes, County Judge, Commissioners. Now, that is the exact concern that we have, identifying the unmarked vehicles for undercover operations and for...
But we're not identifying anything. It's just the memo. There was an attachment to it that itemized all the unmarked vehicles and all that. That is not part of the packet, so that is not anywhere. This is just a general discussion, you know, of a policy. And I think, now, if the auditor's office is going to come back and say they have no issue with this, they should have never written this memo, then fine, then y'all can retract it, and it's not an issue. But I'm just going by what I have in front of me. So if you're going to tell me that it's no longer, the problem disappeared, then, you know, why?
In the past, to my recollection, in the past, in the years that I've been here, we've normally had requests brought to Commissioners Court for unmarked vehicles. You know, when it's more than the number that's been approved in the past, I've not seen a request come by besides a constable that had asked for an unmarked vehicle. That's the only request. And evidently, there's been an increase in some departments in the number of unmarked vehicles. And I don't have a problem with unmarked vehicles as long as they're being utilized for what they need to be utilized, whether it's security or investigative work or whatever. But I know that in the past, that any vehicle that would be approved would come through Commissioners Court for approval, so that we would have an idea of how many unmarked vehicles were in our fleet, in numbers, not who uses them, what they're for, or anything else, you know?
Yeah. Just to briefly address that, yeah, that was the original concern, because the, I guess there were some emails forwarded around that did describe the vehicles, which caused some concern for us regarding those operations that they may be involved in. Regarding the fleet or the unmarked vehicles, I believe through our office, most of those are Fund 90, which I guess I can address with the auditor's office as far as following the policies for making sure they become ready to be used by the county.
Okay. Well, just, you know, and again, the reason that's on is because the auditor's office had a problem with it. And what the auditor says is that in '05, the DA had nine unmarked vehicles. Today, it's nineteen. The sheriff's office had, has currently thirty-eight unmarked vehicles, but only twenty-two investigators. The constable's office, I won't say which constable it is, had one unmarked unit carrying exempt license plates, which is against transportation code. Another constable wanted Commissioners Court for an unmarked vehicle to have regular plates. And in the opinion of the auditor, the unmarked vehicles can be linked to higher gas prices. Unmarked vehicles allow county employees the use of county-issued units around the clock without attracting unwanted attention, da-da-da. Okay? So, you know, I guess if you, and I, the reason it's on is for discussion. I don't think that we're, the way it's worded, we're violating any type of undercover 007 work or anything like that, okay?
That was the original concern.
Right. Okay, well, that's off the table.
Yeah.
So now, we've developed a policy in terms of what our policy is. If you've got twenty investigators, then you need, I guess you need twenty unmarked vehicles, right?
Well, there are times when you might need more, because a particular unmarked vehicle may not be, may not, may should not be used at a particular time, a particular vehicle. They may need to use a different type of vehicle or a different vehicle altogether.
That's correct.
Well, let me ask a question.
There's a lot of issues there with the way they operate.
Let me ask a question, Commissioner. And this requires a yes or no answer, okay?
Oh, yeah. It's difficult for me to stick to a yes or no answer.
All right. Is there, do we have a policy regarding unmarked vehicles right now?
Regarding forfeiture fund unmarked vehicles? I do not believe there is such a policy.
And maybe what we ought to do is, in conjunction with the auditor and you all and the sheriff's office, develop a policy of some sort. I mean, I don't know, I mean, if this, I don't know if there is a policy.
I don't know how you develop a policy like that. You know, if you have, if we have confiscated a Rolls Royce, I use that because I don't think there's one confiscated.
Well, we don't know. We don't have a policy.
Well, I know we don't have one confiscated. So, but, and there are certain times when that particular vehicle, that Rolls Royce, would not be appropriate to be used. So maybe they need to use a Corvair that we confiscated thirty years ago.
Oh, ago.
Long time ago. So it's going to be more than one per person, I guess is what I'm getting at, in those instances. And our policy's been that the entity that has control of them, that is in charge of them, and that uses them, use them appropriately and properly in order to accomplish the objective that they're trying to accomplish.
Okay, well, if we have that policy, that's what we've always done. Yeah, it just, do we have a written policy somewhere?
We have departmental policies. I believe each department's going to have a different demand for the use of certain vehicles. Our use of certain vehicles is going to be slightly different from the sheriff's use of those vehicles. But if I could just address, you stated a few things, and I can't speak to the other departments, but I can say that our investigators, we've increased about five or six investigators because of the task force that we, that is currently under the District Attorney's Office. In addition to, you made the comment about past administration only having, I believe, six, six unmarked vehicles.
Well, it was 2005. I don't know if that's the past administration or not.
Yeah. Well, what had happened when we came in, and what we're doing is cycling out the larger high-profile vehicles, and what had happened, when we inherited the office, many of those vehicles were leased.
Y'all weren't there in March of '05?
Well, we were there in '05. However, we were getting out of lease agreements that were in place before we got there. So we had enterprise vehicles that were leased for investigators. And what we've been steadily doing, and we've been lucky with our forfeiture fund, what we've been steadily doing is replacing, or what we've managed to do is get out of all those leased vehicle contracts and replace them with forfeiture fund vehicles, so that we weren't eating up as much of our budget as what was taking place before we came into But I do agree with the court. I believe a policy would be in place. I believe we have one within our department. I don't know that our department policy would be consistent with the sheriff's or with the constables, but I'd be happy to work with the department heads to develop something like that.
And again, the only reason this came up is because we got a memo from the auditor's office. So I think the auditor's office needs to go back and reevaluate if this, if this is an issue. If it's not an issue, then tell us it's not an issue, that y'all have resolved it. If it is an issue, then y'all need to kind of resolve it with each department that has them and come up, you know, a policy that may be unique to them or whatever it is. But, you know, if it's not a problem, we shouldn't have gotten this memo. Okay?
And if we have unmarked vehicles with exempt plates, and that's against the transportation code, that needs to be dealt with. Because I don't think we want to be compromising the law ourselves when we're law enforcement officials. And not your department, but...
It wasn't your department.
I have read those department regulate, those transportation code sections, that's true.
So we need to make sure that we're not violating state policies, state laws.
Will you all get together and then come back in a month or so, or whenever y'all are ready to come back?
Certainly.
All right? Okay. Thank you. Do I hear a motion to table?
I have a motion on the table.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Tamayo to table, second by Commissioner Gatsa. The table, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Let's go back to the consent items and travel items. Are there any, are any consent items or travel items any member of the court wished to take out of order and discuss separately? Commissioner Gatsa?
Seven, eight, and nine.
Item seven, eight, and nine?
No, the other David.
Regarding, all kinds of good stuff. Okay. Anything else? Any member want to take anything out of order? How about on the travel?
David Gonzalez.
Well, let me, let me get those, then we'll go back to those. Let me approve all those, then we'll come back. Okay? Can I hear a motion on the consent and the travel? Consent items two through sixteen and travel items seventeen A through seventeen F, with the exception of consent items seven, eight, and nine. Do I hear a motion for approval?
No.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Wood. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item seven, consideration and authorization for Cameron County to dedicate the southwestern end of the property adjacent to Maggie's house at the San Benito Annex for master gardener usage.
We have two individuals present this afternoon, Judge, that would like to give us a short presentation. Before each one of your desks, there was a, that over there, two-page attachment that described what they're talking about, and I will let Dr. Pettis and Colleen explain to you.
Well, thank you very much, Judge and Commissioners Court, for having us here at this business meeting. We're here to present an request, and here with me is the master gardener program volunteer plus others that have put or have taken some time in reference to some planning, in reference to some landscaping at the San Benito Annex building. And I'm going to turn it over to Colleen Catlett, which will explain further on the request. Thank you.
Good evening. We were very happy to work with Commissioner Garza on the landscaping around the new annex. He allowed us to meet with the landscaper that had been talked to about that project and the master gardeners. Got together with him and helped design a landscaping program around the new annex, which we hope will be beautiful for everyone. It's also going to be a water-wise type landscaping, something that I think the county is always ready to try and conserve on water, even though at this time, I know that that's not a problem, but for future use. Today, though, what I'm really here to talk to you about is the area that's on the southwest corner. Each of you got a letter, and I believe a little plan, landscape drawing here. That large grassy area, we would really like to see a site for a valley forest. Now, this is something that the urban forester has been working with us on, and also a dream of ours for a long time was to have a site where we could actually have a hands-on demonstration site for native trees and things of valley, things that all the citizens of the valley could enjoy, come together and... could enjoy, come together and benefit from. The master gardeners have a training each year, and it's usually held at the county offices somewhere. And with the new facility, it's going to be a perfect training site, but we could also use this site at the, at the foreign end of the property to have hands-on demonstrations, not only for the people going through the master gardener program, but for all citizens of the county, the adults as well as youth. We'd like to see native trees preserved in our area and used in landscapes, both public and private. And the best way to do that is to have specimens in that area to show people when you're talking about it, because they think of the brush land, the brush country. When you say natives to someone, they think you're going to plant their yard to look like, you know, some brushy patch. Well, there are a lot of beautiful trees in our area, natives, that can be used in the landscapes to beautify the area. We'd like to have those marked as a little trail-type area. The one thing I do want to tell the Commissioners Court is we're not asking for any kind of funds to do this. We're trying to, to work through grants and also the fundraisers that we have as master gardeners in order to do this project. The only thing we would have asked from the county is the fact that it would have to continue to be mowed in that area as we're establishing this little native forest. We would also try to design this in such a way that it would be very low maintenance and low water in the whole area. It's nothing that people are going to have to come in and mow around a whole bunch of stuff. It would have, be designed in such a way to cut down on maintenance. Also, it serves as a central location for the whole, for the whole county, being that San Benito is sort of a central location. And we'd like to establish gardens further in the future, but at this point in time, the only thing we're really trying to get committed to is an area to grow some of our native trees. And if there's, do you have a question?
I think it's a great idea.
Do you have plans for rain harvesting, Dr. Pettis?
At this time...
There's money, there's grants.
At this time, yeah, at this time, we have not gotten that far, because we really just sort of discovered that this land might be available a few weeks ago when we were, when we were discussing with the commissioner of the landscaping around there. It's something that in the future, you know, we'd like to see, we'd like to see rain harvesting everywhere, in people's backyards and every, you know, county public building. I don't know, I can't really answer that right now, that there's nothing in place at this point in time. I know that the master gardeners were involved, and your husband, Commissioner Tamayo, was involved in the Lucindios project, and...
It's been very successful.
It's been successful, and we'd like to see that happen in other areas.
The county doesn't have the ability that cities have to pass ordinances like, I'll use the city of Brownsville as an example, the landscape ordinance, it was passed there a few years back, and I served on that committee and on the beautification committee of the city of Brownsville. And, you know, we saved over ten thousand trees and planted another twenty thousand in just a period of about five years. And it's obvious when, because of that ordinance, when new businesses go into town, they're required to put in landscaping, and a considerable amount, because there used to be none at all, it used to be just paving. But it would be nice if the other communities in the valley that are incorporated were to start looking towards some type of landscaping ordinance. It does improve the area a lot. I know y'all can have a lot of input into that, working with the communities and the cities that you work with to help develop a real landscape ordinance for them. That would be good.
That's true. I have just recently started serving on the beautification committee in Port Isabel where I live, and we're encouraging other master gardeners, as they get the training, to also try and serve on those committees. That's one of our goals, is to, to be active in our communities that we live in, because the master gardeners are people from all over the county, and we have, we have members from, you know, LaFaria to Brownsville. We come together, try to come together monthly, not every month, but we meet, and we try to have, host trainings and seminars for the public after we've gotten the training provided by the extension. We do host other programs for the citizens to pass on the knowledge that we've gotten. So, we will be trying in the future to have more people, I know that Deborah Cox was a master gardener, and she served on the Brownsville beautification committee for a few years also.
She served as our chairman for several years.
Yes.
We just couldn't keep her any longer.
Right. But we do try to do that.
And will you be coordinating, because I know there's volunteers that have been helping with landscaping at Maggie's house for a long time, and I think it'd be so beneficial because there's the kids from Tamayo House that come. And I think you would be wonderful mentors for them. I'm sure they're going to coordinate.
They've already been coordinated.
Good. Yes, we've already spoken to them about the landscaping, and...
Wonderful. They're a big help.
They're in the same train of thought we are as far as landscaping.
Great.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Gatsa, second by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Item eight, consideration, authorization, and acceptance of contract for data entry administrative clerk to the Laredo Intelligence Support Center and HIDA-sponsored multi-agency intelligence center initiative.
David, I only have one question, and the question is the same for both items, if I can do both.
Let me read item nine, consideration, authorization, and acceptance of contract for administrative assistance for the Laredo Intelligence Support Center, a HIDA-sponsored multi-agency intelligence center initiative.
And my question is, are these individuals hired by Cameron County as for this contract, or by the HIDA force, by the contract?
HIDA is the one that chooses the individuals, and these individuals are actually employed in Laredo. However, since the HIDA funds are funneled through this county, the contract is actually with the county.
Okay. But they work, they work for HIDA?
They work for HIDA, they're assigned to HIDA, they're assigned to different initiatives throughout South Texas and the South Texas HIDA Initiative. However, since all the federal funding for HIDA throughout the South Texas Initiative comes through Cameron County, the contract actually has to be with Cameron County on these initiatives.
I move to approve both, Judge.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Gatsa, second by Commissioner Wood. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Executive session item, we hear a motion to go into executive session.
No move.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Gatsa. We are in executive session to discuss six items. Item A, confirm to Commissioners Court legal counsel concerning Cameron County versus BFI Waste Collection and others. Cause number 2005-07-3905-A, BFI Waste Services of Texas LP and Waste Management of Texas Inc. versus County of Cameron in the Thirteenth Court of Appeals, Corpus Christi, Texas, cause number thirteen dash zero six dash six two three dash C V, and BFI Waste Services of Texas LP versus County of Cameron and Red River Service Corporation of Texas Inc., case number B dash zero five dash two seven nine, for the discussion and status of case, mediation, and possible settlement pursuant to Code Section 551.071A and B. Item B, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of parcel seven for right-of-way for Dixie Land Road pursuant to Code Section 551.072. Item C, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of parcel twelve for right-of-way for FM 732 pursuant to Code Section 551.072. Item D, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of parcel fifteen for right-of-way for FM 732 pursuant to Code Section 551.072. Item E, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of parcel twenty-two for right-of-way for FM 732 pursuant to Code Section 551.072. Lastly, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of parcel one for right-of-way for the West Rail Project pursuant to Code Section 551.072. Commissioner Gatsa, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item A, confirm to Commissioners Court legal counsel concerning Cameron County versus BFI Waste Collection and others. Do I hear a motion to table that, that was not discussed? Do I hear a motion to table the item by Commissioner Wood? Do I have a second? By Commissioner Gatsa. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item B, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of parcel seven for right-of-way for Dixie Land Road pursuant to Code Section 551.072. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve, fifty-five ninety-four, five thousand five hundred ninety-four dollars.
Motion by Commissioner Gatsa to approve the payment of five thousand five hundred ninety-four dollars. Do I have a second?
And forty cents.
And forty cents. Do I have a second? By Commissioner Wood. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item C, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of parcel twelve for right-of-way of FM 732. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve, the payment of seventeen thousand eight hundred ninety-nine dollars.
What was that total again?
I got five hundred eighty-nine dollars.
Seventeen thousand eight hundred ninety-nine.
No, it was five hundred eighty-nine.
I got five eighty-nine.
Seventeen thousand five hundred eighty-nine. I'll second that motion.
Moved by Commissioner Gatsa, second by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item D, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of parcel fifteen for right-of-way of FM 732. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve for the purchase amount of nine thousand dollars.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item E, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of parcel twenty-two for right-of-way for FM 732.
Move to authorize...
Second. Moved by Commissioner Gatsa, second by Commissioner Wood, to authorize pizza pool to continue negotiations. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item F, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of parcel one for right-of-way for the West Rail Project.
Proceed as discussed. Motion to proceed as discussed.
A motion to proceed along the terms and conditions as discussed in the executive session by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Gatsa. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item twenty, budget amendments, line item transfers, and/or salary schedules.
Judges and Commissioners, there was a few additional line item transfers that I've placed on your desk, in addition to the ones that were included in your packet. Since we changed the process, I don't know if you have any specific questions for the departments that submitted them. Most of them on the original package are grants to the health department, and they're here if you have any questions in relation to those.
Any member of the court have any questions? Do I hear a motion to approve?
I do have a question. On the JP Technology Fund?
The, yes, I received a call from Judge Muniz, who's the administrative judge, and part of, part of that is they're requesting laptops for the warrant officers for the program that they, they already hired the staff, and so they're, since they're going to be going to different offices gathering the information, and they don't tie up the computers at those individual offices, they're requesting laptops to purchase for them so that way they can take them with them. The other portion, fifteen thousand dollars of that, is actually for a payment to Hammer Enterprises for the maintenance fee on the software that the JP's office uses.
They do realize that they're taking money away from their technology?
Yes, they specifically said the technology fund, yes.
No more questions.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
No move.
Moved by Commissioners Benavides, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tamayo, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item twenty-one, approval of minutes for July the third, two thousand and seven, the special meeting, and July the seventeenth, two thousand and seven, a regular meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes, or do y'all need more time to review?
No move.
Moved by Commissioner Gatsa on both sets. Second by Commissioner Wood. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item twenty-two, approval of claims.
I had additional claims replaced in your desk.
Any questions on claims? Do I hear a motion to approve the claims? Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wood. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Please note my extension on the warrant to Harlingen Water Works.
And I have an extension on warrant zero zero one eight two, eight six two six zero.
Item twenty-three, discussion and possible action regarding the fiscal year two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight budget. Have you?
Judges and Commissioners, I left in front of you also a handout that actually has two sheets, and the difference between, this is where we currently are, between revenues and expenditures. There's a, on the tax revenues, there's actually an increase as far as the projected revenues in total on this first page. The total tax rate is being decreased by one penny. It is being absorbed by the general fund. There's an increase, though, because in, I believe it was last week, on Friday, discussions with the tax assessor's office and his discussions with the delinquent tax attorneys. Currently, the numbers that I was working with was a collection rate for current taxes at ninety-four percent and delinquent taxes at thirty percent. Discussions with the tax assessor's office and his discussions with the delinquent tax attorneys, there's been a consensus drawn that they're going to, I guess, I don't want to say the word guarantee, but I guess the sure collection of thirty-five percent on the delinquent portion of the tax, and the tax assessor is saying he's going to do ninety-four and a half percent collections on the current portion, due to some changes that they're going to be implementing in their office.
And the auditor's going to certify those numbers?
Well, the tax, he'll, I guess you can direct it to him, but as far as the calculations, I guess you would have to certify the collection rate, because it's, you know, formula-driven as far as the appraised values versus the rate. There would have to be the actual collection rate of the ninety-four and a half percent, the thirty-five percent.
Okay, I get the sense that Rob is going to certify those, those numbers.
Okay. What I've done, as far as on the expenditures, I've gone ahead and included on both the general fund and the Roden Bridge, the thousand-dollar salary increase for employees across the board, the absorption of the general fund of the transfer of the commissioner's salaries and half of the secretarial staff. Excuse me. Also, the overtime for the jail is also included in the expenditures. What's left here are the items that still aren't there. The WIC portion, still, since their contract hasn't been renewed yet, it's still pending, still waiting to see if possibly they're going to be able to absorb that ninety-two thousand dollars for the increase for the WIC employees. Under the current funding, they don't. Hopefully, we'll be able to, they'll be able to work it out for the next fiscal year. That'll generate some savings here at the end. So, what's left is the maintenance projects of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the positions for the constable's office, the JP's office, and the juvenile probation. What I have listed there in discussions with Mr. Suposa, the sale of the Travis Street Clinic in San Benito is still pending. We should be receiving those funds, I believe, after the beginning of the fiscal year, since it's a one-time, I guess, injection of funds. I have it here as to offset the one-time expenditures related to the maintenance projects specifically. So, that would actually only be an increase of the fifty thousand, so, for those projects. For the court's consideration, I also have here listed the gateway transfer of an additional hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Currently, I have the hundred and fifty thousand dollars transferred to the navigation district coming out of operations. So, at this point, the budget revenues to expenditures is balanced. What the court can decide to do is actually utilize fund balance from the Gateway Bridge, thus relieving the operational expenditures and increasing the transfer from the Gateway Bridge to the general fund by the hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And that's okay, because that's a one-shot deal.
Correct. This will be the last installment for that.
I don't have any problem with that.
And the maintenance projects are going to be a one-shot deal, all right?
Correct, yes.
Right. Now, Pete, the question, gateway fund balance is adequate enough, or it's not going to, it's not going to hurt, okay?
The, that still leaves us at a deficit at this point of five hundred and forty, almost five hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, which we are still working on. There's a couple of things that aren't included here that, I guess, depending on court's actions, the court's actions on other agenda items may actually affect this.
There's been some discussion, and I think, you know, we need to strive to reduce the tax rate by a penny.
That's the goal that I'd like to see happen. I think we can do it and I think you need to call the major departments and ask them to, you know, to look at their budgets again and really had everybody done the 3.5% to 5% cut as we asked, you know, we wouldn't be having this little, we'd be able to reduce the tax rate by a penny. We wouldn't be short here. So you need to go back to them and ask them, they need to go back and look, you know, they've got, you know, we whittled it down significantly using other resources, but I still think that there's enough maneuverability in some of these large departments where they can find 75, 80,000 a piece. When you've got over a $1.5 million budget, you can't find, you know, 10% or 5% or 3%. That's just not acceptable to me. So my goal still is to reduce the rate by a penny and do these things that we can, but, you know, when you sit down and look at it again, we need to do it, but I think we can do it. Okay? So just keep, now, let me ask you, are there any revenues there that are being accounted for in terms of the federal inmate population?
Only what's been provided by the auditor's office.
Okay, and how much is that from, I mean, I don't want to, you know, we need to wean ourselves away from this federal inmate money because, you know, sheriff, is he still here? You know, this federal inmate money is, you know, it's nice to have, but man, when you rely on the feds, they can pull them out any time. We have jail problems and they get pulled out, so we really need to try to wean ourselves away, you know, from those funds, but work with the sheriff, work with the auditor's office and see if we can massage that number a little bit. Don't overestimate revenues.
Yeah, but if we're housing these inmates, I think we need to account for those revenues.
That's right.
I don't think we need to shortchange our budget process by lowering the revenues when in actuality, we're housing those folks right now. So it needs to be a conservative number, but not a cut rate number as it appears to be now.
And by contract, we're contracted with the feds because they contributed toward the construction of the facility to allocate a certain number of beds for them.
Well, that's true, but we have to keep in mind that at some point, you know, what is the effect going to be if we repair this jail? You know, where are you going to put these federal inmates? Are they going to pull them out? I mean, what are we going to do? So you just sit down with the auditor's office and the sheriff's office and come up with a reasonable amount, a fair amount, a conservative amount, you know? I don't want to overstate it. I don't want to understate it a whole lot, but at the same time, you know, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to do that. I don't want to budget 500,000 knowing we're only going to get four.
We'll be setting up that meeting this week, hopefully. We'll be setting up that meeting this week, hopefully for tomorrow, the day after.
Okay?
All right. So on the road and bridge fund, that shows you that's at the current tax rate that's listed here. The expenditures already includes the $1,000 increase for employees, so the effect, there would be an additional $388,000 available to allocate to road materials. On the second page, what I have is, I guess for clarification purposes, initially, the numbers that I was working on was reducing the general fund by a penny and then shifting a half cent over to a road and bridge, but that was a net effect of only decreasing the total tax rate by half a penny. And that's what's reflected here just for clarification purposes. And of course, the general fund is still the same because that is being decreased by one cent. The road and bridge is actually at a half cent over its current rate. The net effect is a half cent decrease to the total tax rate and those are the results to the two separate funds.
Can I just add this to the show?
Yeah. Other than that, I'll be working with Mr. Sepulveda and meeting with the department heads and trying to see where we can cut back on the budget to try and get it to this point, hopefully to make, have some final recommendations by next Tuesday so that we can have the adoption on the 11th of September.
Well, you know, if you need more time, you know, take the time within the time constraints that we have, okay? But the penny is where we're going with this. Okay?
So Javier, tell me again, who will you be meeting with this coming week?
We're going to be trying to set up the meeting with the sheriff and the auditor's office in relation to the federal inmates, then also trying to meet with the larger departments, which would be the district clerk, the county clerk, the DA's office, and the tax office.
And last week, we had meetings with the district courts and they need more money.
That's not why we want to hear. We need a lot of things, but.
You know, I mean, it's like everybody, I think the biggest area of expenditure is our public defenders group.
Well, in that area.
In that area, in that particular area, and I bring that area up because we've had a number of meetings since last Tuesday. And I know I met with the auditor also and with Judge Alejandro. And at some point in time, this county's going to have to decide whether or not we need to go to a public defenders office and hopefully be able to save some money. Right now, we're spending a lot.
Almost 600,000.
Over 600,000.
Almost 600,000. Is it 647?
77 or 600?
And we brought that issue up in the past and never felt like there was enough, you know, money being spent, but I certainly think, I'm like you, Commissioner, that right at this point, it looks like there should be enough money to fund a public defenders office as opposed to contracting with independent attorneys.
We ask, look at that budget, look at the contracts you have in place, which will be renewed very shortly. Maybe we can decrease those amounts by 1,000 a month and that saves this county almost 100,000 dollars.
What is the average amount that we're paying for these attorneys? I mean, we're paying 650,000 dollars a year for how many attorneys?
Well, it's a combination of contractual and individually appointed attorneys.
No, I understand.
So.
But the contractual.
Contractual ones, 6,000?
6,000 a month per court.
Per court?
Per attorney they have contracted.
That's a lot of money.
You know, I think there's some room there that you might be able to find some dollars that we can find to help balance this.
Did you get that email?
Well, they're asking.
I'm afraid to open emails now.
They're asking for more.
Well, they're asking for more, but, I mean, you know, hey.
You know, and that was a big item in that budget and I know that Rob and I had that discussion and he went back and visited with Judge Alejandro as the budget judge, so-called, in the process and the email I got from Rob was that that was an area that they felt was underfunded.
Well, then, is there any area that they believe they're overfunded in?
No.
Hell, no. They want more. No, well, you know what? We need to look at that because there's.
We've spent a long time on that.
Yeah, no, and I know, I appreciate all the work, but.
But it didn't change anything.
Yeah.
That's the problem.
It didn't go up.
It seems like the longer you spend these meetings, the more money we've got to spend, so maybe.
It tends to work that way.
Anyway, just, that's our, I think that's.
I want you to ask to do it like you did.
I know, you didn't, you did it well. Anyway, that's the direction we'd like to see you go in, okay? Y'all look for it where you can and get with whoever you need to get with.
Very well.
All right. That's on the, that's on the budget. Anything else on the budget?
That's it for right now.
Okay. Let me ask you, in these numbers, is there anything, have you factored in any potential salary savings if the, if we enter into a contract with a hospital?
No, that's not there yet.
That's not there yet, okay? Do you know what potentially that is?
Strictly on the, strictly to salaries and I guess the operational budget that they had within that particular department in reference to the Health Department for the eligibility portion.
Whoever would be transferred, you know, to.
Our administrative cost was 319,000 dollars last year. Are we going to save that amount or not?
Yeah, that's the question, basically.
That's the bottom line.
Well, that's, I guess, to be decided by the court because part of that is also funded or under the direction of the auditor's office. And I know there's been discussions between the auditor and the district judges and the district judges and I'm, excuse me, I believe the auditor, Ms. Roman, and Commissioner Garza in relation to those positions. And my discussions with the auditor was, in his request to the district judges actually, was because of the discussions that had been had during court. He was going to be requesting four additional staff people for the operation of that office. You can correct me if I'm misstated, but one of those was to a contract monitor, a fixed asset monitor and I can't remember the name, I believe a scanner, clerk.
Well, let me ask you, the four people that he was asking, was that considering that he was going to maybe lose two people?
Well, I believe.
Well, you know, let me ask Rob that question.
He's here.
Rob's here.
Rob, the four slots that you were asking for, was that assuming that you may lose two of the slots because of the indigent?
No, I was not assuming losing two.
So you're going to keep those two plus four more?
No, what, in talking to Judge Alejandro and Commissioner Garza, what I agreed to do, if the two slots go away that are now indigent, I would use those two slots to take care of and only have two additional instead of four.
In that sense, it stays the same.
So essentially, it would stay the same.
No, you'd have to.
No, he would.
Yeah, he wants four.
No, but he would have four, he'd have two.
Oh, okay, I got you. But I mean, but it's a budget neutral.
Right.
Agreed to just stay neutral. And that's why it's not.
It's budget neutral for that department, but it's not for us.
Not for us, yeah.
Because we thought of savings, okay? You won't get savings on that side.
No, but, no, you're not going to get the savings, but it is budget neutral.
Correct.
Yeah.
It's staying the same now.
It's budget neutral.
It's staying the same.
When we had the discussion, you know, you were looking at four people, the discussion was that he would categorize an individual with two different hats and use them as either each position. And one of the ones that we were looking at and we discussed was contract management. And we discussed some of the software that's available, how you can utilize technology to hopefully be able to use technology in a very effective way to manage those contracts once you frame the individual and that would free that person out to do some of the other duties that it needs taken care of.
What we didn't figure in there was the cost of the software.
Right, we didn't figure in the cost of the software.
But that's a one-shot deal.
So then, if we ignore the auditor's office for now, then what would the, because I think Commissioner Wood's point is that 319,000, and I don't know what's included, but add in.
Some of that's in the Health Department because we've got three employees in the Health Department, two in the auditor's office, if I understand it correctly, that do indigent healthcare. So we have five people.
Okay, let's, and that's not a player here for now. How much do we save?
It's 120,000 dollars for the positions and the operational expenditures within that.
Within the health, within the indigent Health Department.
The indigent Health Department budget.
Okay, but that's not in here.
That's not there, no, all right.
Okay.
What's the set amount?
120,000 dollars.
That's everything?
Yes, salaries and the budget that's there for office supplies and things of that nature.
All right. We can whittle it down. I mean, we can whittle this thing down if we do this right, okay? All right. Anything else on the budget?
A little bit at a time.
Do I hear a motion to acknowledge Javier's report on the budget? Move by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Ganza. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 24. Consideration authorization of a public hearing regarding the fiscal year 2007, 2008 tax rate.
Judges and commissioners, this is the first of two public hearings to be held as required by statute. The second public hearing will be next Tuesday, same place and at the same time, given the public notice that the maximum tax rate that the commissioners' court is considering is the same as the current tax rate, which is .348191 per $100 valuation.
Do I hear a motion to open public hearing?
So move.
Move by Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Tamayo. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. We are in a public hearing. Any member of the audience or commissioners need to make a comment on the maximum tax rate? Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
I think the only comment would be before you make a motion to close is that the maximum tax rate that this court is considering is the current rate we have today for this assessment.
Correct. Any other comments? Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
So move.
Move by Commissioner Tamayo, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Ganza. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 27. Discussion and possible action to purchase flood insurance coverage from National Flood Services Program for 11 county properties. Rob?
Those properties that were listed there, they are currently not covered and we just need permission to.
You recommend approval?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
I move to approve for the question purpose.
Move by Commissioner Ganza. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion?
Are those structural values on the, those numbers right there?
That's based on the flood insurance value rate. They don't, they don't cover the whole structure. They're covered, it's just for flood damage.
So the maximum they would cover on any of those buildings is that rate?
Yes, sir. My understanding.
That percentage.
It makes absolutely no sense that you have a building, like the one we have, the Paulo O'Brien plan in, with the structural value of 200,000, which is maybe, what, 8,000 square feet, something like that, or 14,000?
Yeah.
I can't remember exactly. And then you have the building that has 78,000 square feet.
I think that's the maximum they'll cover any building is.
200,000.
It's 200,000.
Does that make any sense?
We've got 500,000 on one of the Levi buildings.
Yeah, well, it's a lot larger building than any of the others.
I mean, the county annex and the fedia or the county jail, does that make any sense?
That, it's just the, that was the.
What did y'all do last year? What did y'all do last year or the last time this was up?
It wasn't covered before, so.
I'm sorry?
It hadn't been covered before.
None of these buildings?
No. Not with flood insurance, they're covered with regular inch property.
Oh, so this is all new?
Yeah, this is new coverage. Because they're in the flood zone, they, you can only get it through that one company, so they set the.
Well, if we hadn't done it in the past, why are we doing it now?
It's just, that's what we're asking if you want to do it.
Well, you all asked. Yes, okay. What do you want to do?
Do these numbers in the column on the far right, the dollar amounts, are they supposed to add up to the 13,559 or are they, are they supposed to add up to anything? They don't add up to either of the numbers in quote one or.
That is just the quotes the, that company gave us, two different quotes.
So if we insured them separately, we'd be looking at the numbers at the right on the items on the line that they're at, but if we insure them totally, we can either quote, take one or two because those at the right don't add up to be the one or two.
I don't know how he came up with the ones on the right. I just know they had the two different quotes for the total.
I don't know, I came up with them either. That's why I'm asking, I guess.
Yeah, there's a quote one, which is 500,000 dollar value and then there's a quote two, 200,000 dollar value and there are different premiums associated with each of those quotes, which makes those prices different.
Right.
But actually, there, you see the difference.
And they couldn't give us a quote on the one because they had to get an elevation for it.
On the probation, the old armor.
But it's just whether you want us to, the discussion is whether you want us to approach them and get firm quotes. These are just estimates for y'all to look at what the additional cost would be.
Just budget somewhere?
But they, they're not supposed to add up to either of those numbers down there.
Not currently because they're just estimates.
What is the total premium Levi's quote? Well, Levi's, Levi's has two different numbers.
Right.
Based on the 500,000. That may be it there.
So there is no subtotal, no, for those premiums.
Okay, okay. I see what you're doing. There could be a subtotal, yeah, with one or two.
One or two, depending on which quote you go with on the Levi's building.
Yeah, we don't have anything, we're still pending the highway one hundred forty-two thousand Texas.
Right.
Quote there.
It's just whether you want us to pursue it further or.
Did we insure the property in a hundred-year flood zone plan?
That's, that's, yeah, that's.
I mean, it's really not that much money to have insurance. It's up to the court, that's what we want to do. Do we have to do this today, Rob?
No.
Why don't we, let me ask for a motion to table this item and, and have every member of the court kind of go over a little bit slower, have them give you a call, maybe explain this a little bit better to everybody?
Okay.
Okay, let's do that. Is that all right?
Move to table.
Uh, motion to table by Commissioner Agatha, seconded by Commissioner Wood. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item twenty-eight, discussion and possible action to authorize advertising for RFP, request proposal for property, automobile, and general liability insurance coverage, discussing hiring or of consulting service to prepare, evaluate, and recommend the RFPs.
Some of these, uh, item insurance policies are going to expire in the next six months, and we just want to know if y'all want to go out for quotes. We haven't done that in quite some time, and we've had vendors that have expressed interest in.
I think we should, RFP it out.
Well, I'll get with Mike and work up some bid specs and.
Why don't we do that?
The other question is, do you want to hire a consultant to?
Why don't you develop the bid specs first, or do you all want to hire a consultant at this point? And do we need to hire a consultant for?
Yeah, that's my question.
You know, for something that's pretty straightforward. I mean, this is not like health insurance.
It's up to y'all, that's why I'm.
Well, let me hear, well, let me hear a motion just to authorize you to, um, to, you know, to get with, with purchasing, Mike Forbes, and develop an RFP, and bring the RFP back to the court for review and approval, okay? Moved by Commissioner Agatha, seconded by Commissioner Wood. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item twenty-nine, consideration and approval of contract between Cameron County and Rio Grande Valley Health Services District for Healthcare. Yvette?
Judge, Commissioners, good evening. As the court knows, on August second, the Rio Grande Valley Health Service District Board requested that a contract be forwarded to the Cameron County Commissioners' Court for a future contractual relationship. After that, um, the Commissioners' Court has had some discussions during Commissioners' Court, and they've requested that I make a recommendation to the court. Tonight, I am prepared to make that recommendation. I took the liberty of typing up a memo to the court because I thought it was important, not just for the Commissioners' Court to know what my thought process was, but for the Valley Health Service District as well. They are scheduled to have a meeting on Thursday morning and will not have the opportunity to, to view this presentation until, I believe, the earliest Thursday evening. So I'd like for this information to be sent to them as well. So, um, I typed this up today after three o'clock, so it's got a couple of typos, but please bear with me. I'm going to go ahead and start. After a great deal of consideration and based on the most recent information that I have, I am recommending that the Cameron County Commissioners' Court not enter into a contractual relationship with the Rio Grande Valley Health Services District. There are four important dates to keep in mind and are as follows. March tenth, nineteen ninety-nine, a meeting in Austin to announce the initial concept. January twenty-sixth, two thousand, the temporary board's first meeting. February twenty-second, two thousand and two, the concurrent order signed forming the Rio Grande Valley Health Service District. August thirty-first, two thousand and six, Idago County gave one-year notice to terminate agreement with the Valley, the Rio Grande Valley Health Service District. The initial concept for this project was announced on March tenth, nineteen ninety-nine in Austin by the then Texas Department of State Health Services Commissioner of Health, Ren Archer. Both the county auditor and I attended this meeting. There was discussion that in the near future, the state would cease to provide South Texas healthcare system services, and proposed legislation was also discussed. For the past several years, there have been three levels of key leadership, the Valley Delegation, Commissioners' Court, and the Rio Grande Valley Health Service District Board. It was not difficult for any of the leadership to work with the Valley Delegation, but it was difficult for the two Commissioners Courts and the Rio Grande Valley Health Service District to work together, primarily because of the indigent healthcare program, state matching, and tobacco, tobacco settlement funds. The following are my reasons why I believe the Cameron County Commissioners' Court should not enter into a contractual relationship with the Rio Grande Valley Health Service District. Number one, although by law, a health service district should, for its operations, manage indigent healthcare program, state matching, and tobacco settlement funds, both counties, on good faith, entered into an agreement with the Rio Grande Valley Health Service District with the understanding that if the district dissolved, then those funds would be diverted back to the respective counties. Although the board has been in existence since two thousand and two and has been managing the funds for the last few, maybe two to three years, it was only in the last couple of months when it appeared that the Rio Grande Valley Health Service District would dissolve, that the board decided to go through an RFQ process. This RFQ process was to award funds to other entities contrary to the agreement of diverting them, meaning those funds, back to the respective counties. Number two, I agree with the Rio Grande Valley Health Service District Board Chair that this is a unique opportunity for Cameron County, but I would have liked to have heard about specific projects that are unique and that the Rio Grande Valley Health Service District Board wanted to undertake, but that, but I do not know of any such projects. When the county auditor and I met two to three months ago, it was to discuss how we could continue to support the Rio Grande Valley Health Service District. When the county judge met with the Cameron County, Rio Grande Valley Health Service District Board members, he asked them the same question. At Commissioners' Court, the question has been asked. Everyone, including the Rio Grande Valley Health Service District Board members, are trying to respond, but the question has not been answered. Number three, the Rio Grande Valley Health Service District lacks the necessary infrastructure, infrastructure, I'm sorry. The Rio Grande Valley Health Service District has had good leadership, including the consultants. I believe that Petra Reyna and Rick Morado were excellent choices, and their expertise and background was more cost-effective than hiring, than hiring permanent employees to represent the Rio Grande Valley Health Service District. But the fact remains that Cameron County, Cameron County Government does have a strong infrastructure that includes the employment of full-time employees in departments, such as legal counsel, auditor's office, human resource, resources, and health and human services, that can perform similar functions without the additional costs. I want the court to know that without the partnerships that were formed, I don't believe the state would have continued to financially support the South Texas healthcare system. The loss of that entity would have been a great loss to our community, and only through the leadership of the, of the Valley Delegation, the Valley Health Service District, and the Commissioners' Court, does our community continue to benefit from the services of the South Texas healthcare system. This, this is my memo to the court, and I would like you to know that I typed this up after three o'clock, so if I had thought of typing it up sooner for the purposes of the, uh, the Valley Health Service District Board meeting, I would have had it, I would have added a lot more comments about the board members and their commitment and, and everything that they have tried to do to try and continue this project, which is a very good project. In the end, I think that the primary goal was to keep South Texas healthcare system, because the state was interested in making, in, in getting out of hospital services and also getting out of the South Texas healthcare system. A few years ago, South Texas Hospital had three hundred employees. Today, South Texas healthcare system has about less than a hundred employees. And even those hundred employees, the state was interested in, in not providing those services and not employing those people anymore. This would have been a great loss to us. But really, because of the partnerships that were formed and, and really, the, the Valley Health Service District, because of, of, of the court's, uh, decision to enter into that type of, of contract with them, then I believe that the state continued to try and work on how to, to keep South Texas healthcare system here. So in the end, I believe that they served a very, very important role in keeping South Texas here, and I'm grateful for that, because it's very, very hard for, for me and for the employees within my department when they have nowhere to send the indigent population because there's lack of funds. But South Texas healthcare system not only, not only oper, not only opens their door, but they, but they continue to promote themselves, that they are a resource for people to go to. So that wasn't part of my memo, but I think you know which part was the end of it.
Thank you. Any, any discussion, Commissioners? Do I hear a motion?
I'm going to accept Ms. Salinas's recommendation.
Okay, I have a motion to accept, uh, Ms. Salinas's recommendation to not enter into contractual relation with, relationship with the Rio Grande Valley Health Services District at this time. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion, and I would like to commend Yvette, because I know you've spent hours and hours on this, and, and I have much respect for your passion for, uh, really analyzing and researching and coming up with, with the best recommendation. So I have faith in that we're doing the right thing.
I have a motion by Commissioner Agatha, seconded by Commissioner Tamayo. Any additional discussion?
I think we're going to lose a component of healthcare that we desperately need in the area to see to it that the indigent are properly taken care of. Uh, I think the board members of, of the district have committed themselves and are strongly proponents of healthcare for the indigent, and I think we're going to lose that. Uh, and I, and I hate to see that go.
Commissioner, I've been working, as you can see, on this project for eight years, and I haven't been the only one. Um, the county auditor has well, and my staff has too. And, you know, there, there are some board members that, you know, have been with this from the beginning. So I, I agree, you know, that, um, they've served a very good purpose, and it was different. But nonetheless, I, you know, my opinion stands. Um, I, I do believe that, uh, that because, primarily because of what has happened recently with the RFQ process, um, happening at the, at the, at the tail end. If it had been something that had happened, you know, a year or two ago, um, and had been worked out with the, the Commissioners' Court with both counties and had gotten their support, then, then it would have been a different situation. But really, for the last two or three months, this whole RFQ process has, has been a very negative type of relationship with, uh, with, with the Valley Health Service District and Idago County. And I do not want to see Cameron County go down that same path as well.
Well, I, and I understand what you're saying about it being a negative relationship with Idago County, and perhaps that has also all been worked out, because now Idago County, if I understand correct, what their commitment was to the Health Services District is that they're going to follow through with what the Health Services District had planned on doing in Idago County. Now, I don't know that we have that same commitment with Cameron County yet, because it hasn't been brought to us in that form yet.
And Commissioner, and they're going to follow through, but they're not, you know, this was not something that they had agreed to beforehand, and that's the issue that I have. I believe that, uh, that they should have consulted with Idago County and gotten their support, and, and maybe they're just their ideas. But, you know, following through was after the fact, and that was after, you know, I honestly feel that Idago County was being strong-armed by those entities who did receive, you know, the, the award of the proposals. So yes, they did work it out, but I feel like they were strong-armed. And, but you have to remember, the initial agreement was that the funds would go back to the counties. And Idago County was put in a position where the funds were not necessarily going back to the county. And you know as well as I know that, you know, our county, you know, needs the funds as well. And so, you know, I believe that these funds should have, if they were not going to be overseen by the Valley Health Service District, then they should have been overseen by the county, especially when the, the board was due to expire possibly, and then who was going to monitor, you know, the proposals and the performance measures and how the money was spent and so forth, so forth?
Is monitoring a very important issue in this?
It is when you're dealing with taxpayers' funds, with public funds.
I, I just want to be sure that, that monitoring is an extremely important issue, you know, with not only this, but other taxpayers' funds. And I agree with you, I think it is.
But, well, I'm, I'm glad you're saying that, because I would think that you would not do that question, that it just plain is. And as, as we work with Cameron County Government, that's what we do every day. We, you know, we monitor the funds and how they're being spent and, you know, and who's, you know, who's working and how well they're working and so forth, so forth, because we all have an obligation to safeguard those public funds.
And we want to know where the funds are going, what they're being spent for, and how they're being used, and all this, correct?
Absolutely.
That's what we all work for, yes. Thank you.
All right, I had a motion and a second to accept Ms. Salinas's recommendation. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Nay.
Of course. Thank you.
Of course. Thank you. I just want to be sure.
Item thirty, item passes. Item thirty, consideration and possible approval of affiliation agreement with Valley Baptist for participation in the upper payment limit program.
Judge and Commissioners, and we put this item before you. It's, it's the agreement that would partner the county with Valley Baptist Hospitals in, um, trying to obtain funds from the Medicaid services. Valley Baptist is here to give you a little bit of a presentation and to answer any questions that you may have. Yvette Salinas and the Auditor's Department, and Pete Sepulveda and David Garcia and I, we have met with them for a couple of months now, and, and we feel that we've gotten to the place where we want in this agreement. And, um, at this point in time, I think you just want to hear from Valley Baptist if you have any questions.
The one area that I, that I had had a concern about, and I, and I, I believe I, I got the answers, but for the record, I'd like for someone to address it again, and that's on, uh, I call it the appeals process, that I think it's in your vocabulary's determination, or what is, what's the fancy word you all use?
It's on the next agenda.
Oh, it's on the next agenda item? Oh, I'm sorry. You see how focused I am on that particular, uh, situation? I think it's on the next agenda item.
I have a couple of questions on the affiliation agreement.
Oh, this is something we didn't have.
I don't know. I just got it.
Okay.
Oh, first of all, let me ask a question. Does any member of the court have a question on the affiliation agreement?
Yes.
Okay, you want to go ahead? Maybe we've got the same ones.
On the affiliation agreement, Article three, paragraph three, point one A, um, indicates that the affiliated hospitals, uh, it is a nonprofit, tax exempt corporation duly established and created pursuant to applicable laws with all requisite power and authority to enter into this agreement in all respects. We're talking about affiliated hospitals there, is that correct?
Uh, yes, Commissioner.
So this, this in essence eliminates any hospital that might be for-profit?
Yes, Your Honor, Mr. Commissioner.
If we go to page six, Article six, paragraph six point one, admission of new affiliated, affiliated hospitals, upon the mutual agreement of, of the parties to this agreement, this agreement may be amended to add one or more affiliated hospitals. Will that negate the issue of any added affiliated hospitals being nonprofit hospitals? For example, my understanding is that there may be a time when Harlingen Medical Center might want to become part of the affiliated group, and they're not a non-for-profit. How, how would that work?
Well, in that case, we would, uh, we would sign an amendment or addendum to this agreement that would, um, would change that one.
Would negate the idea that affiliated hospitals are not, are for, are nonprofit hospitals, and then allow that one to join under six point one?
Yeah, upon the mutual agreement of all the parties, if, uh, another hospital were admitted, then we would also amend this agreement to, uh, provide for that.
And the reason I bring that up is because I understand that, uh, Harlingen Medical Center does not meet certain requirements and criteria under Medicaid that would allow them to participate in the program at this time. However, if they did to meet those requirements, just as a hospital in Idago County didn't meet them, but then came within those, and then were granted, uh, admission into the affiliation of the rest of the hospitals in Idago County.
It's a, it's a good question, Commissioner, and I appreciate you asking it. Uh, I've spoken with, uh, Harlingen Medical Center. As a matter of fact, we own almost a third of Harlingen Medical Center.
Thirty percent, I believe, yeah.
Thirty, thirty-two percent, uh, of the. Thirty, thirty-two percent of the operations of that facility, and about nineteen percent of the real estate. And they're not ready yet. They've got, they've got some time to tick before they can qualify as you suggest. And the reason this is written this way is because it only contemplates nonprofit hospitals, our two in this one, and it would be our absolute desire for them to join us at some point in the future when they do qualify. Irrespective of tax status, and in any other hospital, irrespective of tax status, would have to necessarily have an amendment to this agreement. This agreement covers our two, anyone that comes in in the future. Obviously, we don't care whether they're taxable or non-taxable or, you know, whatever.
But we would care because the agreement says it has to be nonprofit.
Well, the, and the document right now is appropriate because it only reflect, it only reflects on our hospitals, our two. If we add additional hospitals, irrespective of tax status, the plan will require an amendment anyway, and we would be more than happy to amend it to let any and all hospitals participate.
But I just want to be sure, you know, the plan right now, as it's designed, is specifically only for your two facilities.
That's correct, because one of the hospitals that, in Brownsville, decided they didn't want to participate, and Harlingen Medical Center didn't qualify currently. So that's correct.
Want to clear?
So the amendment process will be there?
Yes, yes, ma'am. We would expect it. It was, it was our intention from the start to have as many hospitals that could qualify and were interested to participate, participate, and so we've ended up where we are today, standing alone in front of them.
Anything else, Commissioner?
Not on that portion of it.
Commissioner Tamayo, any questions?
No, I'm going to let him go ahead and continue.
Okay, there's more?
Not on the affiliation agreement. I guess we're going to talk about the determination agreement later.
I think it's the next, the next item. Commissioner Tamayo, any questions on this affiliation agreement?
Not on thirty.
Commissioner Gatsa? On four point four, when it talks about quarterly reports, I would just like to see language in there where that quarterly report gets to us within a prescribed period of time, like third week after the end or something like that. Just add something in there.
What's your, what's your pleasure, Jim?
Thirty days is fine.
Thirty days?
Within thirty days of the end of the quarter, okay? On four point five, we've been discussing about the potential transfer of employees. It talks about the compensation offered shall be no less than received by such employees in the county at the time of the effective date. The effective date is, would be September first or today?
August twenty-first, Judge.
August twenty-first, would be, assuming that. I would like to include that you factor in the thousand-dollar raise. It may not be a whole lot, but to them it is. Thousand-dollar raise, they're going to get October first into that language as well? Okay?
There will, there'll be, anytime you transfer employees from one organization to the next, you've got to make sure to coordinate those benefits, those raises, to make sure that equity is preserved, and those are exactly the types of things that we would, we'd be looking for.
Okay. Because that, that raise will become effective October first, so just that, okay?
And I'm assuming that those employees that would be transferred would be transferred into the Rio Grande Valley Indigent Healthcare Corporation?
That is our plan.
Okay. So maybe you give them a bigger raise than that.
I guess that would be a possibility.
Okay. Are there, are there any other questions or concerns that any other member of the court have with the indigent care affiliation agreement?
I have a question, and the question is to legal. You reviewed this and you feel comfortable?
Sorry? You reviewed this and you feel comfortable with the document as presented with the changes that the judge recommended?
Yes, sir. I have, I have a question for Yvette. Yvette, I know that I've been in conversation with you on several points that concerned me, and you feel comfortable on the, and I won't go into all the details that you and I discussed, but what I refer to as a transition, the different points that I brought up as far as eligibility and to where our population will not feel threatened, and that this transition will be what we hope it will be.
Yes, Commissioner, and that's, and that's why it was important to me when we had our discussions as far as where would the eligibility be performed, and that's why I requested that they continue to be in the Cameron County location.
I just wanted that for the record.
Okay, so there are no further questions regarding the affiliation agreement? Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, seconded by Commissioner Gatsa. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Item carries. Item thirty-one, consideration approval of health care services determination in regard to the Cameron County Indigent Health Care Affiliation Agreement. Any member of the court have any questions regarding this agreement?
Well, this is what I've discussed with Yvette and I've discussed with you, and after my discussions with Yvette, I think it's worded properly and legal. You felt like?
Commissioner, when you had a question?
Yes, I had a question on who would be on that committee, and it will be our, could you address that, please?
Yes, Commissioner. There would be an appeals committee that would be established with three members, one of whom would be the health administrator, and two of whom would be appointed by the hospitals. And they would adjudicate appeals of eligibility determination.
Would any of those members of that committee be a doctor or a physician from the area?
It's within, it could be, it would be up to the hospitals involved to make those appointments.
But the one that is specified is our health director.
That is correct.
And two hospital employees.
Well, it'd be two, two appointees by the hospital.
By the hospital.
Right.
I'm sorry, yeah.
On three point ten, the same question that I had regarding the compensation. Just address that. All right. Any other questions or concerns from any other member of the court regarding the health care services determination agreement?
I had a couple of questions, Judge. And one I think you pretty well covered, but in three point eight, on page six, the company will provide quarterly reports to the hospitals regarding the provision of health care to eligible residents. Now, the company, when we're talking about the company, we're talking about Rio Grande Valley Indigent Healthcare Corporation that's going to be established in order to operate this program.
That's correct.
And so they'll provide a quarterly report to you, then that's when you'll provide it to us, as the judge was asking about in the affiliation agreement, if I understand it correctly. On page six, again, Paragraph six, three point six, C, fees, the company will pay claims made by providers for services provided to eligible residents under Cameron County Indigent Care Efficiency Initiative in accordance with the procedures used by Cameron County Indigent Health Care Program as of the effective date of this agreement. What are those procedures?
Well, Commissioner, it's unclear.
It's unclear to me, too. That's why I asked you.
Let me try to explain the way this has worked, is that the county has allocated a certain period of, a certain amount of money for these claims. There are no contracts with providers outside the gatekeepers, the individual primary care doctors that are the gatekeepers. We would, we would strongly suggest that you get provider contracts in place because that's very important when money's changing hands.
Well, if this goes through, it'll be the company getting those.
That's correct. That's correct. And that's all part of this, that's, that's who's covered in this agreement. And, and so what the practice has been, has been the monies are paid out for claims, and it's like a first come, first served deal. That is, as long as the money's available, claims are paid. As I understand it, there have been some things that have been worked on through the, through the health office that has administered this program, that for certain things like chemotherapeutic drugs and those kind of things, make sure we keep paying, they keep paying the gatekeepers and that kind of thing, but there was some triaging done in terms of sort of maintenance, ongoing maintenance of those claims. And frankly, outside of those, as the claims started, kept coming in because people kept receiving service, providers simply weren't paid until the next fiscal year, and then the bucket got refilled with money. And that's sort of the process. The claims, to your point, have to be submitted, unfortunately at this point because it's state law, by paper. They can't be done electronically. We think that a minor change in that law would make this a much easier process by making it electronic, like ninety-nine percent of all claims filed today are in fact adjudicated. And so that's kind of the way this process has worked historically. So you have a, you have a sort of a, not really a, you have a defined benefit structure, but it's good only until the money sort of runs out, and then it's, it's sort of built on a foundation of paper claims, which makes it, the claims come in and somebody actually key punches the claims into a system that codes it out and assigns a dollar figure and then pays the claims to the providers. But that's a very labor-intensive process, and certainly we think that, we think that a tweak in the state law that governs this, that would allow for electronic adjudication from the start, and it would be considerably more cost-effective, and frankly, give us all more information that we can use to manage this very vital program.
And I guess the reason I ask this because I'm a little unclear, because in previous years, I've asked when people have called me about their, their claims that they provided not being paid, and I've generally been told that it's a first come, first served, except for the one who hollers the loudest, and his gets moved to the top, and this type of issue. So it's been kind of hard to really pinpoint and put a finger on, and I'm wondering, you know, I would certainly not expect that since, since the company, which is another entity outside the county and outside your hospital, would have some definite procedure for paying claims, and not necessarily always paying the hospitals first, or always paying X, Y, Z first, or whatever.
Our, our, our plan right now is to, is to put some more money into the, into the deal. There's about, all in all done, about four point three million dollars that goes in there between county and state match and that kind of thing, and about three hundred thousand or so, three hundred twenty thousand for administration. It's about four point three million. It's our plan to put about five million dollars into this deal and sort of add some additional monies into this program that's starving for funds relative to the need, and trying to manage it a little, maybe a little tighter than it's been managed in the past. The, that'll require some changes, and that'll require us working together through these quarterly sessions, as I've mentioned to you offline. We're going to come back to you as we get into this with some recommendations that we think, once we get into it, we've got more knowledge about it, and we can speak intelligently about what, what we think we should be doing, we'll work that through back with the court, and we can make recommendations and that kind of thing, and give you a more accurate assessment of the deal. This, just for the record, this, this agreement, from a financial perspective, limits the liability of this company to the five million dollars. So at the end of the day, if five million's spent, it looks like you're going to spend about, Yvette, three point seven or eight million this year, it looks like so far. So we think we've got a little room in there. But to the extent that that money would be extinguished, the liability of that organization for that particular reporting or tax period would be, would be limited to that amount. And you had asked me some questions, again offline, about what would we do, and are you going to have year-round coverage and this kind of thing? What would you do, Jim? I think you asked me, what would you do, Jim, if, you know, that, that next patient walked in, or that next claim came in the door after you'd run out of money? And for that next claim, my response was, we'd pay the claim. We, we want, it's our intention to make this a stronger program and a more durable program, not one that, than it is now. And, and I think that this program, this mechanism that we've been working on and that you have been interested in, and Commissioner Tamayo and others have been interested in, and we appreciate that interest, because we think by bringing this unique conduit to bear, we can bring more money in to make this program more durable over time. And, and I think, you know, everybody would like to have a guarantee about this and that, and all of us would. But that's, that's kind of how we're planning to run it, is that we're going to put about seven hundred thousand dollars more into it upfront. We're going to get into it, roller shirts sleeves up, get into it, and make some assessments about what could be changed. We're not going to change anything initially, and we're not, we're not looking to change anything because I don't know what to change yet. I don't know what recommendations we would make until we get into it and we get some experience under our belt. And then our commitment has been to be, for you to be completely transparent in that regard, and, and to provide whatever insight or assistance we can, and to take your direction on that. I mean, this is an important program. It's not being, it's not as strong as it might be. And, and I think that we appreciate your interest in helping strengthen it.
It is an extremely, extremely important program because we do have lots of needs, and I think we have lots of needs that are going unmet, and I think you all understand that, too, from our conversations. And I want to touch on the amounts of monies now that you've been talking about.
Right.
And at four point three million, that is historically what the county is more or less looking at putting into it currently. With the monies, the three million, our eight percent, plus whatever else we match from the state with the ten percent match and this type of stuff, so it grows to around four million, something like that. We're intending, if I understand it correct, to provide the state with three million. The state, through the federal government program, upper payment limit program, is going to send back down to Valley Baptist Hospital, seven point five million, seven and a half million.
That's right.
The company, Rio Grande Valley Indigent Health Care Corporation, that, that is on the determination agreement, is going to take five million of that, and that's all they're contracted to do, to spend on indigent health care.
That's right.
In addition to the three hundred and twenty thousand.
That's right.
For administrative services, which is about what it costs us now.
That's right.
So actually, they're going to be more efficient by, you know, using three hundred and twenty thousand to administer five million, as we do three hundred and nineteen thousand to administer four million. I guess, I guess my question then comes down to, if we take the seven and a half million and we deduct five, that leaves two and a half million, and we deduct three hundred and twenty thousand, that leaves two million, one hundred and eighty thousand dollars that has come back to Valley Baptist Hospital, that I don't know where it's going to.
Right. The, well, you can, you can be assured that the three million that you're putting in is going to be spent on, specifically on the indigent care program, chased in by an additional two million dollars of money that, that we would be providing through this UPL.
Through the federal government money.
Through the, through?
Yeah, it's not your money. It's federal government money that comes down.
Excuse me?
It's federal government money that comes in, not your money.
That comes to participants in the Medicaid program.
No.
Yes, sir. And, and it's, it's part of the, of the federal government's program to pay for the poor and infirm and indigent in our, to pay hospitals for the poor and the infirm and the indigent. So in, in that regard, that's what's unique about this, is that the hospital's the conduit for that, based on how much indigent care they provide. The more indigent care the hospitals provide, the more money is available to be drawn down through this program.
Correct. And that's also relates back to another issue that the hospitals get annually, which is, I think, referred to as the DISH funds, disproportionate share funds, that you all provide services at emergency rooms and whatever. And I know in two thousand and five, coming down from DISH funds, the two facilities you all own received thirteen million, four hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, and then the other hospital in Cameron County that, that fits under that program, received five million, four hundred and sixty-three thousand.
The, and the reason that we receive that level of DISH money is because of the order of magnitude that we provide.
Providing more services.
And so the amount of services, let me get back to your original question, which was, what are you going to do with the money?
I just don't want to mix up, you know, these funds with these funds.
Well, they're matching funds. It's, it's, and the way to access the UPL, the UPL, the upper payment limit drawdown is that you've got to use public funds to do it. And, and there's some very significant stipulations, that's why this has taken so much time to work through. It is our intention to use the funds to fund the indigent care program by adding about a million dollars additional into it than its, than its current level of spending. It is our intention, because there can be no quid pro quo, obviously, in this relationship because that busts the UPL guidelines, as you might imagine, but it's our intention to use that additional money to pay, to continue to pay for the cost of providing indigent care.
What additional money you're referring to?
The, the two million dollars that's in your mind.
Two million left over? $2 million leftover?
Yes, sir.
From the $7.5?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. And so, if you take $7.5 and we put $5 into the deal, that leaves $2.5 million. Our intention is to use that $2.5 million to continue to provide services to the indigent in our community. It is also, this is unrelated, but as I've, I think explained or suggested to many of you, we have a large insurance company. We are, it is my, it has been a, a project and really more of an idea that, and something that I had hoped that we could move forward in our county that has about 40% of our population that's not insured in any way, either by Medicaid or Medicare or the indigent program or whatever, or, or third-party employment insurance. As a matter of fact, and be able to provide low-cost insurance, be able to create a pool and write a benefit plan so that we can begin to get some low-cost insurance out to people who can't afford it. And we wouldn't have to go very far to find them. In many cases, third-party government, like, even like the county. I don't believe you provide assistance for spouse, spousal coverage.
Family.
You know, there are lots of companies that, that we provide coverage for in our insurance company. Some of them provide spousal benefits or extra beneficiary benefits and some don't. And they do that in, that's the employer's, you know, prerogative. But in, in either case, if you think about having 22 or 2300 people here that are employed by the county, but all of those have family members and that kind of thing who don't get assistance in providing and buying that insurance, that would be a good pool for us, for example, to be able to provide a, to provide a service to because those folks are just as uninsured and need care just like anyone else.
But by the same token, Mr. Springfield, wouldn't that narrow down the hospitals that they would be able to go to?
No, ma'am. It would not.
So you're going to pay. And you're saying that your health plan would allow any county employee that got their spouse or family members?
Yes.
To go to any hospital and your health insurance would pay for it?
Commissioner, I haven't offered to cover the spouses of the county employees. Y'all are taking that health, the healthcare matter up as a different issue. I'm answering a question as to what we've been thinking about in terms of trying to not sit and wait on somebody to deal with the issue of the uninsured that is so significant in our community today. And, and if there's something that we can do to help that, we would like to be able to create a pool and, and put some of our thoughts together and be able to provide some insurance to folks that otherwise simply can't afford it. And whether, as an example, it was that, it was the, it was the folks that would be covered, whose spouses wouldn't be covered under an employment situation, as an example. I'm not prepared today to talk to you about what we may or may not do relative to the network of providers in our insurance company. That's not, that's not a...
Well, that was going to be my question, I think maybe to simplify it, is are all the other hospitals in Cameron County in your network of your insurance company?
In, we have, in, in a variety of products, the answer to that is yes. In some of the products, the answer is no. It depends on which network we're using. It depends on which product is being offered. It depends on what the employer wants and that kind of thing. And so, there's no one-size-fits-all on that side of the business. And it is certainly, relative to this deal, we would, you know, that money would be, you know, we would be at risk for that money and we'd, we'd be at risk. And so, you know, we want to be thoughtful about how we manage that risk. And at the same time, I don't see any other organization in our, in our community in any kind of meaningful way dealing with this issue. And I could just as well tell you, you know, we're going to take that money. We're going to continue to pay for the cost of providing indigent care, which is very significant. We provided $200 million of indigent care last year. Our hospitals, our hospitals provided 99% of the charity care provided in uncompensated Medicaid costs, charity care for the poor. We provided 99% of those services provided in the entire county of Cameron. And so, and so...
I guess that would be reflected in DISH funds.
Along with Valley Regional. 99% represented.
Along with Valley Regional. Because I was going to say, you know, this DISH fund doesn't indicate you did 99%.
Along with, along with Valley Regional, we provided 99% of that deal.
There's primarily three hospitals here, Valley Regional, your two, and a couple smaller ones.
Right.
Yeah. So I would expect that to be the case.
Right. And that, and that, as, as other infrastructure grows and, you know, that load gets shared, but sharing the load isn't, isn't dealing with the problem. The problem is the people don't have coverage. And there's no one that's out there that I know of that's trying to do something about providing coverage and access to, you know, about 160,000 people that don't have insurance in Cameron County.
And I think that's what we're here for, to provide as much coverage and, and access as possible. And I guess that's why I'm questioning why $7.5 million come down, $2,180,000 gets left somewhere in your hands to deal with the way you want to deal with it.
Correct.
And then I'm reminded of the conversation with Yvette on the last item, or item before last, about the issue of who's actually monitoring taxpayers' dollars once they're turned over this way. Who actually monitors them, other than a quarterly report to us, which is not what I consider really monitoring. That's just a report of what's kind of gone on as compared to who's seeing to it that the appropriate people are being taken care of in the appropriate manner.
Right.
Whereas I think an extra $2 million in there instead of $5, if it said $7 in this determination of service.
Yep. But Commissioner, that's discounting the fact that that extra $2 million is already being provided in service. It's already being provided in service. Today. And, and more. About, in terms of total cost, total cost, just our organization, I don't know the figures on the other hospitals, but in terms of total cost to our organization, it's $48 million. $48 million a year.
Is that before or after the $13 million comes back?
That's after. Excuse me. Before.
Before. That's what I thought. Thank you.
I think the, Mr. Springfield, I think the, the question should be, if we enter into this agreement, is there going to be additional money available to provide indigent healthcare services? That's the bottom line.
Yes.
Okay? And is, you know, is there going to be more money available to provide to our indigent? It has nothing to do with eligibility. Is there going to be more money available to provide to our indigent population?
That's correct.
That's the underlying fundamental reason. And we can do all the smoke and mirrors and everything, but is that, that's the fundamental question.
It has everything to do with eligibility because people are eligible that aren't getting serviced. And if we're going to go from the $4 million we use to $5 million, you know, we're going to have more people that are eligible that are hopefully going to get more service. But if it went from $5 to $7, it would be just that many more. So it is a, it is an issue of eligibility.
The eligibility, the eligibility state, it's a statute. It's not something that we order somebody to...
I understand. Not everyone is getting served that's eligible.
Well, this year, seven months of service was given.
Well, again, let me, let me go back just to the basic question. The basic question is, is there going to be more money available for indigent healthcare?
Yes. Okay. Think about it this way, Judge and Court. If you think about additional money, that, think about it in terms of capacity. Right now, there's X amount of capacity to deal with this growing population of uninsured. And the provider community is essentially financing that today. After the money's paid and all that kind of thing, the service continues to be provided. The folks are not going without service. They're receiving it. The providers are going without payment. Any additional dollar that goes into that till creates additional capacity and durability relative to the ability to provide those services. So the answer to your question most definitely is yes, sir. Those dollars are going to be used and will be used to strengthen and increase ours and others' ability to provide charity care over, and indigent care over and above what is currently being provided.
Let me ask, and I hate to put Yvette on the spot, but Yvette, you're, you're more familiar with this indigent program than, than any of us up here at this, up here at this court. Would you, and I, and I haven't asked you this question before, but let me ask you, I mean, doing this agreement with, with whomever it is, does this provide more monies, does it provide for more monies to be eligible for indigent healthcare coverage? That's, really, that's what I think we're all concerned about or interested in, that we're providing. I don't, you know, it doesn't bother me if, if, if a hospital's making money or people are getting paid. I mean, we all get paid for the services that we do. I don't, you know, I don't think you, you know, not take a commission if you sell a piece of real estate, you know, or I, I get paid for my accounting work or whatever. The farmer, same thing. That's not the issue. I don't, I think the issue is, you know, are we going to have more monies available to provide for the indigent population, you know? And it's, I know that this document's kind of complicated, but really the bottom line is that. Is that what this is going to do? Or are we better off staying the way we are? Or are we better off entering into this agreement that could, that is going to generate or not generate additional monies towards indigent healthcare?
This agreement, in answer to your question, it's yes. It's going to provide more funds for indigent healthcare program services.
And I think everyone agrees with that just by the terms of the agreement. Anyone can, you know, we can all add and subtract. $4 million is what we're spending. $5 million is what we're going to get out of this. That's better, best is if we got that extra $2 million. And that's $7 million. That's best.
Well, but again, if, if we're, if we're, you know, if we're a million dollars ahead, it's a million dollars. And we'd like to be...
And it could be $3?
Yeah. Well, but you know, that's not what's on the table.
That's correct.
On the table is, is a million dollars. So you're, you're willing to vote against something because not $3 million, a million dollars isn't enough, but $3 million would be okay. That doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, Judge, let me tell you something.
I'll take the million dollars in a New York minute.
Judge, and provide someone else. Never mind.
Judge.
Okay. If they're not willing to come up with the $3 million, why would they not commit to seeing either a next amount of extra patients or putting an additional amount of money? I was told that your negotiation said no all across the board. Okay? Now, my, my...
Hold on. I don't think he heard you. That you were told in whose negotiations?
I, in the negotiations that's been going on, I asked, will the hospital commit to seeing additional patients? Okay? Whether it be 1%, 2%, 10 patients, 20 patients, whatever the case may be. Okay? And you, David, told me that no. The only thing that would happen is that the monies would be there year-round. So who's going to gain by that?
No. I told you, I told you that... Hold on. Eligibility? Can I ask a question real quick? How many indigent patients are we seeing right now?
From my precinct?
No, no, no. Everybody in Cameron County.
Probably about 2,000.
Okay. So then, so if they, so they commit to seeing 2,100 or 2,200, which is 10%? That's okay?
Well, as long as more, I mean, as long as there's some...
Well, I think if you're going to provide, if they're, if they're committing, if, if we're hearing from not only the hospital, from our own staff, that they're going to be providing additional indigent healthcare services, one would assume that it's going to add more to the population subject to eligibility.
And I understand that. I understand that.
You'd assume it, but they're not committing to it.
You, you still go back to the issue of eligibility.
That's right.
That's, I mean, that's set.
That's right. They can't control eligibility.
And I'm not asking them to. I'm just asking to...
Well, but you're asking them to commit to a number. How can they commit to a number?
To see some more people. Why not? This is the taxpayer's money, Judge. And yes, if you want to know, yes, I voted, of course, against getting rid of, of the Valley Health Services District.
But, but the point, the point is that you're asking them to make a commitment when they're telling you that they're going to spend a million dollars in additional indigent healthcare money.
Which are monies that are coming from the state, not from them. They stand to make money off of this.
But, but if, but if we don't do this, then we don't get the million dollars, period. So you leave a million dollars on the table somewhere else. That's what, I don't understand the rationale. They're, they're providing another, the way I understand it, another million dollars in healthcare services. And what I'm hearing at least one say is Commissioner Wood saying, no, no, why not the $3 million?
And why not the $3 million?
No, no. And that's fine. That's a legitimate question. That's a legitimate question. But that's not what's on the table. Now, if they say, you know what, you guys want to commit that extra $3 million? Or, I don't know what you're going to say, but let's assume they say yes. Then you'll support it?
Why not?
Okay. And if they say, and if they say no...
Then let's negotiate, Judge.
Well, they, okay. Well, we've been negotiating, but if they say no...
We've been negotiating for what they brought to us and nothing else.
Well, let me ask you. Who's been negotiating this contract?
The individuals that are involved and, that have been involved in the committee have been the Valley Baptist representatives, legal counsel, myself, somebody else from my office, the auditor's office, the county administrator, the budget officer as well.
Right.
I have another question, a follow-up question. And this has to do with, I know the question came up with who's going to be monitoring. And Jim, I'm telling you, I'll be monitoring.
I know you will, Commissioner.
And, and, and I feel that with Yvette's involvement, she'll certainly have a role to where she'll be monitoring. And I'm just going to have my last say and, and that's it. Jim, I have extremely high expectations. I think you know me well enough that I usually do. And if I support something, that's what I expect. And from where I'm sitting right now, the process that is being implemented is what's bringing in more money to the table. And, and we need that. We need that. But the proof is in the pudding.
I agree. You know, there are...
And these, these have 90-day outs.
They have 90-day outs. I was just going to go there, Judge. There, look, there are provisions in these contracts that, you know, CMS, the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services, may stop these UPL initiatives tomorrow. If they do, we're dead stick. It's over.
I understand. They're looking at it closely.
Say again?
They're looking at it closely.
They are. And they, we just got the funds flowing in the, in the, back recently on some of these initiatives around the state right now. And you can understand why they, they should be. This program, we're, we're absolutely convinced, this program is golden relative to their requirements for eligible types of UPL initiatives. We, so we don't feel, we don't feel badly or at all worried about that. The, just the whole concept of just a broad brush sweep in Washington saying we're going, we're going to cut these programs off are obviously a concern and a risk. One of the reasons we put this in, in place of, that the 90-day outs that the judge talked about and, and to your point, Commissioner Tamia, is so that either party can, can, you know, this isn't something that's set in stone forever. I, I absolutely believe that the first time we met with y'all in a workshop, I believe Commissioner Wood said to me, well, Jim, this sounds too good to be true. And, and, you know, I guess that's what you get when you deal with the federal government, but that there is some sensibility in some of these programs. But let me mention that once, what this affiliation agreement does is it says, in exchange for Valley Baptist or for this, excuse me, this Rio Grande Valley Indigent Care Corporation to assume the indigent care program, up to $5 million, which is a million dollars more than what you're spending today. A million dollars more. You're abdicating that money. You're putting it up and certifying it to the state. The state puts it up for the match after they certify, and that's what causes the monies to flow down. All the monies at that, from that point on, belong to the recipient of Medicaid funds. That's the hospital conduit. What our obligation to you is what's in the services and in the affiliation agreement. That's what we're obligating ourselves to provide to you. And one of the reasons this thing is so convoluted, Judge, is because the rules require it to be separated this way. There, there is no nefarious intent. This will clearly improve both directly, the amount of money that's available to take care of the indigents in Cameron County today. It will clearly create more capacity in the existing provider community to take care of more indigent care folks today than we're doing now. And I've been looking at this for about three or four years now, and I can't find another program that, short of this court raising taxes and putting more money in to take care of all this, I can't find a more efficient way to do it. If they're out there, I'm all ears. But, but we, we think this program will work. We think that it's going to take some time to get transitioned. Our standards are pretty high as well, Commissioner. And, and, you know, we're going to be standing up here in front of you once a month, once a quarter, however long you, however often you would require us. We would prefer every 30 days. And, and, you know, we know we're going to have to do that. And so, I think you're going to be pleased with the result.
I have one question. What took us so long? I mean, I know that our neighbor in county to the west has been enjoying the fruits of UPL funds for a number of years now. They've had a year-round indigent healthcare program. Initially, when, when I had a discussion with Yvette a while back, it was like nobody wanted to touch UPL in our area.
There's two or three things that were, that were out there. There was some question about the legitimacy of the Hidalgo County UPL structure. We were, we were watching that. They were going through a broad-based provider tax... that. They were going through a broad-based provider tax. There's a lot of these initiatives all over the state. Uh, and that one has proved, uh, thus far, to be patent, although they, they were frozen up for a long time, a long, long, long time. They've not been seeing funds flow over there for, uh, significant periods of time because they were under audit and discussion by CMS before it actually got certified.
Okay.
And we're very circumspect around this one, and, and, uh, that's one of the reasons. We, we don't, we don't feel like there's a lot of risk because relative to, unless EMS just broad brushes the whole program and throws them all out, we think this one is , uh, one that, uh, will, uh, will, will be one they'll hold up as being, you know, the way it should be. We had to get it put together. Uh, it does take some time. We wanted to, again, this is a, from a health risk perspective, if you think about premium dollars and, and, and costs and claims, this is a very risky population of people, uh, this twenty-three hundred folks that we're talking about here. And so we've got to make sure, we had to make sure that we could get comfortable, frankly, accepting that level of risk. And, um, and, uh, and we are.
That it answers my question. So a million dollars?
A million dollars is what we expect in additional indigent healthcare services.
And if that million isn't spent, if all five million isn't spent in a year, where's the balance go? Does it stay in the pool, and you've got that to the extra next year?
It, it stays with the-
It stays in the company?
No, it would stay with the, it would stay with us. It would stay with the company because we're at risk for that, and if we don't spend it all, then it would stay with the company. Uh, and, uh, and we'd wait and start over.
So someone really needs to monitor what's going on, so that everything is taken care of, so a million of that doesn't stay there. So you only, you know, we don't want you-
Say it again?
Someone really does need to monitor, so that y'all do actually take care of as much as you can with five million as opposed to what you can take care of with four million and keep that extra million.
That's a requirement, uh, that's, that's going to be, that's a requirement, that's the reason this company's been put in place, and that's a requirement back on a monthly basis to be, uh, be back in front of you, just like you're looking at it on a monthly basis today. And so, uh, so we couldn't agree more.
Is there, uh, Yvette, is there a downside, or, Bill, is there a downside to this that you can see?
You know, Commissioner, and Judge and Commissioners, we've been working at this for a couple of months, and, and the longer that we've been doing it, the more comfortable I've been, I've become with it. I, at this point in time, no, I don't see a downside. Um, and I know it's been mentioned before, and I'll say it again, there is, you know, it's, it's almost on a ninety-day trial basis, and we, the court will be informed of how the program is working, and, and you're going to get that chance to observe and look at the reports, and, and look at the claims that are being paid, the doctors that are being paid, the, um, eligibility determinations that are being made. And so, no, I think this time, at this point in time, I don't see a downside.
Yvette?
There's a smidgen of a downside. And it's that the current employees that are part of the indigent healthcare program eligibility also perform the indigent burial application process. That's the only downside I see, is that I'm going to have to try and figure out how to transfer those duties to somebody else.
But in, in terms of the, of the agreement, the dollars we're talking about, the methodology, do you see a downside? Is this-
Judge, I believe it's good for the county, for the providers, and for the indigent population.
Okay.
How many employees are you talking about that you're going to have to see about?
In, in our, um, in our department, we have three indigent, uh, healthcare program eligibility employees that will possibly be, uh, transitioned over to the new company.
All right, do I hear a motion to approve or not approve the indigent care affiliation agreement as presented by, by staff and Valley Baptist?
Motion for approval.
Move by Commissioner Tomayo. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gatsa. All who's in favor, say it by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Judge and Commissioners, um, were you approving the affiliation agreement? I think you've already done that. And the one that we would want approval of would be the-
The determination, I'm sorry. The determination agreement, isn't it?
That's, that's right.
Okay. Well, item thirty-one, healthcare surdetermination. Same motion?
Yes.
Same second, same vote. Item passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners.
Item thirty-two, consideration and approval of negotiated contract, Cameron, Cameron County Health Benefits for RFP zero-seven-zero-six-zero-two between Texas Association of Counties and Cameron County for September first, two thousand and seven, to August thirty-first, two thousand and eight. Manuel?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Wealthy's going to give you a presentation in regards to the negotiations and all the agreements where we will not be losing any benefits for the employees, and, uh, and hopefully the county can save some money.
Manuel, I have, I have one question. Um, the reimbursement, because this has come up regarding the Brownsville Surgical Hospital, we've talked about it a little bit, the reimbursement, or can you explain if the reimbursement to that hospital is the same or similar to the reimbursements to the other hospitals?
The answer to that question is no, for the other hospitals in the community, which are full-service hospitals. The reimbursement offered would be similar to other hospitals in the state or in this area that offer the limited specialty services offered by this facility.
How do the, how the, uh, how does the reimbursement with this new company differ or similar to what we had with our prior or existing health insurance company?
That is confidential information, uh, with regard to the negotiation between the insurance company and, and the provider.
Okay, so then we don't know if, if, if they're getting the same or less than what they were getting with Mutual of Omaha?
No, we do not.
We don't know that?
We can, you know, build on that and talk some more. Um, I have-
Well, I, I, I think the, the, uh, the issue has, has come up that that, that, that hospital believes that they're not being treated fairly as they, as the other major hospitals in the community. So I'm just trying to get a, a, a feel or indication from you as our consultants, whether they're getting treated fairly or not fairly, and if not, why not? And is there any room for negotiation between Blue Cross and that hospital to get them to a comfort level, uh, that, that, uh, that allows them to stay in the program?
I think we're going to give you two handouts.
The word fairly may be a little difficult to define because, as you've just said, no, they don't get reimbursed the same as the other two hospitals in the, in Cameron County.
That is correct.
You're saying they get reimbursed based on hospitals, their similar services in other areas.
Yes, sir. That, you, you hit it on the head. And we are going to distribute-
The answer is no, they don't get, don't get reimbursed the same as the other hospitals.
That is correct. We're, we're distributing two, uh, items for discussion that hopefully will provide a little more insight. And again, I have to come back to, these are direct contracts that are confidential and are not available in the public setting.
Well, it's, it's a bother to me when, when they have a, a Medicare, um, and I'm not, you might help me with this, because if Medicare says, okay, you can pay ten thousand for a cesarean section, and they negotiate a discount of sixty percent to, uh, the larger hospitals, so they would pay four thousand, whereas, uh, Brownsville Doctors' Hospital would only get paid nineteen hundred. Eighty percent discount, you know, and this is-
So you know that factually? I, I don't know that.
Well, I, I have been told this. I haven't seen it in writing, but I have actually been told it by people from the different hospitals.
Um, if, if I could go through the two handouts that have just been distributed, one would be, um, it's titled, uh, fam, uh, Facility Provider Gross Charges and Net Payments. Uh, it is, uh, a listing of the Mutual of Omaha payments, uh, that were made to, uh, all providers. Uh, and it, it goes from the, uh, um, highest payment, uh, we call it net payment, uh, down to the, the lowest number paid. So the two full facility hospitals, uh, in the community, which would be Valley Baptist Medical Center and Columbia Rio Grande Regional Center, and then the third one would be Valley Baptist Medical Center of Brownsville. So the top one is Valley Baptist Medical Center, which would be Harlingen, and then Columbia Rio Grande Regional, and then Valley Baptist. If we go over to the right-hand side, uh, we are showing the reduction percent. Now, this is not discount. What this is, this comes from Mutual, and this is all that they would release, and it was part of the RFP process. Uh, the gross charges are the total amount that, uh, was presented to the insurance company for reimbursement, and the insurance company then takes that gross charge, and then they will adjust it by the provide, uh, the employee's share of the cost. They may have duplicate bills, they may have other cost reduction items. Uh, they come up with a net payment after they apply their discount as well. And so the reduction percentage for a Valley Baptist was forty-five point four percent. Taking the net payment amount, uh, against the gross charge, we have a, a reduction amount, uh, that was just eighty-seven, eight-thirty. So that was a forty-five point four percent reduction. The Columbia Valley Regional Medical Center, it had a comparable reduction of amount of a forty-four percent. The Valley Baptist Medical Center of Brownsville had a sixty point one percent reduction. With Brownsville Surgical Hospital, it had a seventy-six point seven percent reduction. And from this, it is telling me that the discounts that Mutual of Omaha had negotiated with the Brownsville Surgical Hospital were different than what were negotiated with the full facility hospitals. So that's an item I wanted to bring out in, in this discussion. If I could, and then we can come back to this. If I could go to the second handout, which would be the statement from Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and, and we have been on Blue Cross, uh, come on, let's see if we can't work something out. And so there, there were contracts going, offers going back and forth between Blue Cross and the Brownsville Doctors' Hospital. Uh, and so that was going on through Friday. And then Monday, we received a letter from Brown, Blue Cross received a letter from Brownsville saying that they were not going to accept the offer that, uh, was given to them. So this is Blue Cross's statement as to their position on that letter that was presented. And I, I'd like to move down to the second paragraph. The first paragraph is just talking about the background of Blue Cross and length of time and the full service, the servicing two-hundred-and-fifty-four counties. Uh, Blue Cross's position is that they have continued to negotiate in good faith with the eight-bed surgical facility in Brownsville. Uh, part of the problem is they want to be reimbursed at higher levels than other comparable facilities around the state. That comparable facilities is their statement as to what they're offering to the Brownsville Surgical Hospital. For a hospital of that type, they're offering a contract that is comparable to what they do with other limited service facilities. They move on to their next paragraph of what is fair reimbursement. And their statement is, fair and comparable reimbursement means that Brownsville Doctors' Hospital would be reimbursed the same reimbursement as other facilities in the same geographic area who offer the same services. Now, they move on to the next paragraph. Of course, Valley Baptist Medical Center is a two-hundred-and-forty-three-bed facility, and the Valley Regional Medical Center is a two-hundred-and-fourteen-bed facility. And here's the key element, with both offering full-service medical and surgical services to the community. Within, that full service, they have to be staffed night and day, they have to have the emergency trauma, uh, they have to carry the bad debt for the indigent care that we heard earlier about. Bad debt is, is a big issue. When you get into a specialty facility like the Brownsville Medical, they, they know when the people are going to come in. They're able to check the insurance status of those people. I doubt sincerely that their bad debt load is anywhere near what these other two full facilities are. And that goes into part of the negotiation, the offer of what will be available. Uh, moving on to the next paragraph, although our current discounts with providers in that market, in this market we're dealing with here, are confidential, it is obvious that Brownsville Doctors' Hospital, an eight-bed short-stay facility, is not comparable to the other facilities in the community. And then they go on to say, uh, how they're the largest provider of healthcare services in, in Texas with forty thousand physicians and four hundred hospitals serving three-point-five million members in two-hundred-and-fifty-four counties. An, an item to note here, uh, is that in negotiating provider contracts, the volume, the, the, the number of members you represent is very critical. That's a critical mass to negotiate with the facilities. And it's my understanding that Blue Cross in Cameron County has forty thousand members, not counting you. And so that's a sizable number, and that gives them the ability to negotiate. Um, that's their, their position on it. As advisor, as a consultant, as an independent, uh, insurance person, where I work around the state, uh, I have counties and cities that have found a way to adjust their costs so that they can live with pure Medicare allowable rates. And that's kind of a baseline, and then you go up from there. And so I don't know what was being offered, uh, by Blue Cross, but it's my understanding it was something more than a Medicare allowable rate. So, um, it's unfortunate, um, as we can see, um, by the summary, uh, that I presented to you earlier, there were a hundred-and-fifty-seven, uh, claims that, uh, were processed for the Brownsville Surgical Facility. However, the net payment amount, uh, was only two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, two-eighty-eight on that's, on those hundred-and-fifty-seven. That works out to be something like fifteen-hundred dollars per claim. So that, that's a lower claim amount than what we see on the other full-service facilities. And, um, I, I wish that something could be worked-
Well, but that was, that was the previous plan.
Yes, yes, yes. And, and so-
So they were doing the services at that rate?
They were doing the services that we're looking for today. And I think it was at a, a lower rate, it was at a low rate.
Yeah.
I can't say whether it was lower than what Blue Cross is offering.
Being provided, they decided that they don't want that business anymore, evidently, right?
At that rate? Yes. Uh, so, you know, is the door closed? Uh, I, I'm sure Blue Cross will hold the door open for them if they want to do further negotiations with Blue Cross. Uh, they have also said that the, there's two type of contracts that Blue Cross has. They have their full PPO contract called Blue Choice, and that's the one that appears on the website. And then they have another type of contract that is more of a direct negotiation, it's kind of a wrap around that Blue Choice for those, for whatever reason, would not want to be in the Blue Choice. And that contract is currently with Brownsville Surgical Hospital. However- However, they have now, in their termination letters, said that they wish to terminate that contract as well. So when we started out, we felt that we could offer the employees access to the Brownsville Surgical Hospital, Brownsville Doctors' Hospital, used to be called the Surgical Hospital, through this other contract, participating contract, and that was the game plan. And I felt real good that we'd negotiate and worked that out in the early part of the negotiations. And then we're, Blue Cross, and we pushed them to try and take it to the next level, to this Blue Choice level, and that didn't work out. I would hope they would reconsider.
You indicated that Blue Cross has forty thousand members in Cameron County?
Yes.
And, okay, that's pretty good.
I can tell you that, you know, in our presentation, we'll go into a difference in the discount that Blue Cross is willing to commit to, what they think they're going to be able to bring to the table at the end of the day. And that's roughly about sixty percent discount. And we compare that to the information that is in the Mutual of Omaha reports that have been provided to you monthly and that were in the RFP. That discount is forty percent. So we're talking about an increase in your discount, a reduction in your cost of roughly twenty percent with this Blue Cross network. And we would hope that it could include-
Are you, are you here for this item?
Yes.
Okay. Whenever you get to a point where you believe you've come to a stopping point, I think-
Sure.
Just, if you want, just come up to the podium and introduce yourself and tell us who you're with, and, yes, sir, please.
Good evening, judges and commissioners. My name is Jorge Ramirez. I'm the Chief Financial Officer for Brownsville Doctors' Hospital.
What, I'm sorry?
Brownsville Doctors' Hospital. And the gentleman that was explaining the situation is accurate in some way, but also inaccurate in other ways. The bottom line, that what we were looking for in this negotiations that we've been talking to him about for the past fifteen months, we initially agreed to this other contract that they were talking about, May two thousand and six, on the condition that they would be able to provide us with a better reimbursement methods than what they had originally offered. They indicated to us that they would do that once they were ready to prepare and present the PPO contract. That time came, and-
I think I'm lost here.
Okay.
You said that for fifteen months, you've been negotiating with, and then May of oh six?
We, we- We agreed on this PPO agreement or not participating agreement, May first, two thousand and six.
But that was with another insurance company that-
That was with Blue Cross.
Well, not through Cameron County, I mean, unless y'all were doing this-
No, I understand. I'm not, my, my position is that they indicated that-
They being-
In bad faith, that we were negotiating, we've been negotiating with them for the past fifteen months.
Okay, but, okay, hold on. We need just some clarification here. I don't know where this fifteen-month come from, you know, comes from, I don't know what has taken place, I don't know anything about that, because this is, we need to speak to this issue, our insurance with this existing, whatever, I don't know what happened in two thousand and six, but it wasn't through Cameron County unless y'all were doing something. Okay? So maybe it was through another entity, another governmental entity with them, but we just started this process in the last ninety days. So I don't know what happened, so I don't want to mix apples and oranges here, because I'm not really sure if that's really relative to this.
Well, I guess the impression that I got from the, the presentation that I was listening to was that they've been negotiating in good faith. Well, we've been negotiating in good faith as well.
Well, but I think what they're referring to is the, our, our contract, our bid or our RFP, as of right now. I don't know what happened fifteen months ago, I don't even know if it's the same folks that are involved, I don't, I don't know anything about that. So if we could, if you could, just limit it to this contract, I don't, I can't agree or disagree, because we haven't been a part of that, those negotiations fifteen months ago. So if we could just go to what, what we're trying to do with our contract and, are these the same individuals that y'all have been dealing with for fifteen months?
Yes.
Same people?
Yes.
Okay, just so I know. So something has happened now with this contract that you're not comfortable with?
What happened is they, they were aware that this contract was coming up ninety days ago, or whatever-
Whenever we RFP'd it out, that's correct.
Exactly. So they understood that they wanted to have all three hospitals in the agreement. We were not in the agreement. So that's why they very aggressively, aggressively came over and discussed additional arrangements.
With you all?
With us, with the hospital.
Okay.
That did not work out, based on two other issues that they brought up a little while ago. One is, are the hospitals in our area being reimbursed the same? The question is, no, they're not. My response, or I'm sorry, their response is, well, they're not even classifying us as a regular acute care hospital. We are a regular hospital, just like the other two hospitals. The situation is, they have two-hundred-and-forty-three beds, the other facility has two-hundred-and-fourteen, we only have eight. The bottom line, that, the point that we would like to make simple, an appendectomy, a C-section, it's a C-section whether you go to the other two facilities, the cost is going to remain the same.
And that, you know, honestly, being a layperson, that, you know, I don't know how you all, I say you all, come up with, with differentiating reimbursement plans if the cost is the same. I don't understand, from that vantage point, what difference it would make to Blue Cross, Blue Shield, what their overhead is, or what their cost of operations is. If y'all are reimbursing for a procedure, why would you, and I'm just, this is, just, because I don't know, I'm, I don't, I'm not in the insurance business, but why is it that you would reimburse a different amount at a larger hospital than a smaller hospital if the procedures are the same, the doctors are the same, the beds are probably more comfortable at their hospital, you know, their facility's a nicer facility than most hospitals, that mean it is a nice facility? Can someone explain that to me in layman's terms as to why, you know, a smaller hospital would be reimbursed significantly lower than a large, a larger hospital? Can someone explain that to me? And I will tell you that I rarely ask a question unless I know the answer to it, okay?
My name is Bill Norwood. I am the Manager of Employee Benefits with the Texas Association of Counties. I am not an employee of Blue Cross. However, I'm one of their larger purchasers, so I've got some insight as to your question. First of all, the two gentlemen on the end of the row there from Blue Cross are not empowered to negotiate hospital or any other provider contracts. They are area representatives for Blue. The people who negotiate the contracts are in a special department in Dallas, and so these two individuals have had no involvement now or eighteen months ago. The other thing that may help the Commissioners Court to understand is, when any facility, whether it's eight beds or two-hundred-and-fifty beds, or a doctor practicing dermatology, negotiates a contract with any insurance carrier, it's not for a specific client, it's for all their relationships with that carrier and any customers that may come in and present an ID card from United, Aetna, Blue Cross, whoever. And so what the gentleman was referring to in his negotiations fifteen months ago was with Blue Cross, and it would have pertained to any of their forty thousand customers who would have walked into their clinic or hospital as a patient. So I think that's why he was feeling that was pertinent. As to the level of discount, it's like any other business. If there is a quantity discount available, then it'll certainly be applied here. And a hospital, hospitals have leverage too. As a matter of fact, there are large hospital corporations such as Tenet in Columbia that use that leverage to negotiate. We have a hospital in Pennsyl, a hospital corporation in Pennsylvania that owns a hospital in your next-door county to the west, and they own a hospital in Amarillo. Those two long-distance relationships are used when they are negotiating with insurance carriers. We'll do this in this area if you'll do that in that area. And so the hospitals, the larger they are, like Valley Baptist, the more leverage they have with any insurance carrier. It's not that the insurance company gives them a lower rate, it's those hospitals demand the lower rate, and they get it. They have the leverage with two-hundred-and-fifty beds that an eight-hospital-bed facility simply does not have. The other thing that's sort of difficult to understand, particularly in that report you have in front of you, is that the starting point may very well be different. And I don't think any of us here in the room have the data to reach a definitive conclusion there. But as a financial person, I like to know what my starting point is before I start thinking about percent discounts. We don't know that the bill charges from one hospital there are the same for a same, the procedure, as they are for the next hospital. I can tell you statewide, they're generally not. There's a rather large variation in that starting point, so that one hospital may claim a forty percent on a given charge master, another may claim to give a thirty percent, the end number comes out the same. So the judge used a term earlier with another item of smoke and mirrors, and you can really get into that when it comes to hospital negotiations. It's a hard thing to understand, it's very, very difficult to get all the facts. But that's, that's why.
Just a, just a real quick observation here.
Do that.
And I still don't understand the answer, okay? But if, if you take what that hospital, the small hospital, did in the number of gross charges versus the number of, of claims, it's at about six thousand, four-hundred-and-forty-four dollars per claim.
Mm-hmm.
Gross. If you go to the biggest hospital that had a one-point-nine million dollars in gross charges, but three-hundred-and-nine claims, it's six thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars per claim. So just looking at it real simplistic, that the dollars per claim, I mean, are, I mean, they're comparable, I mean, they're within a hundred-and-twenty bucks per claim.
It happens to work out that way.
And why, why does it do that? I mean, well, if it has to work out-
I don't have, no, I said it happens to, I'm sorry.
Well, I, you hold on, let me, let me take the other one. Let me take the other hospital, Brand X.
Thinking I should have brought a calculator.
Yeah, I left mine.
I'm sure you're going to get to the net payment difference.
Well, that's-
Which comes next.
If you get to the, to the other, to the other hospital, their per claim is four, forty-two-hundred dollars, okay? So the biggest and the littlest are comparable, the one in the middle is about a couple of thousand bucks off. But I don't, but yet, when you get to the, to the reduction amount, I mean, there's like a thirty points, I think it, yeah, about a, more than a thirty point spread, but the dollar claim is almost identical. But yet, the, the reduction is so high, so I'm having a difficult time understanding, and I understand about the leverage, but we're talking about healthcare, we're talking about accessibility, you know? And to me, it appears that based on these numbers that we, that we were provided, there's very little difference between the big hospital, you know, two-hundred-and-forty-three beds, and the eight in terms of a per claim count. So that's what I'm having difficulty with. Why would there be such a large difference in the, in, in, in the, in the reduction amount from one to the next? That's what I don't really quite follow.
It's a two-part question, as I understand it, and if I get off track, please correct me. First thing is, you've got the largest and the smallest in your example coming in very, very close, and the other large facility is running about two-thirds of the largest one. That is strictly claims mix, and it's somewhat random, although the larger the facility, the more predictable it is.
But yet, the reduction amount between Valley Baptist and Columbia is only a point apart.
Mm-hmm. I'll get to that part.
Okay.
Let me, the claims mix is what determines that average charge, and in that more specialty hospital with eight beds, our understanding is that most of those claims are C-sections and other OB-GYN claims. And in terms of treating a full range-
Let me ask you a question. If someone goes for, for a, for a C-section at Valley Baptist, and they go to, for a C-section at Brownsville Surgical, is the reimbursement going to be the same?
Probably not.
Okay, and why not if, if, if the same services, same doctors a lot of times, same procedures, why is there such a large disparity in that? I can understand about specialty claims and, but let's, let's compare apples to apples.
I think I'm missing Jim from Valley Baptist here, but I'm going to try to answer-
Well, he's still trying to figure out where he's going to get another two billion dollars, but I'm just trying to figure out why, why the differences.
Jim has a huge write-off for maintaining that trauma center, and he has to balance that write-off for medical services he provides to your public against his more profitable areas. Anytime, and I can speak for the whole state, anytime a physician-owned specialty hospital opens up, in Austin, we just had a heart hospital open a few years ago, that plucks the most profitable real estate out of the major trauma center and puts it in an isolated facility.
Okay, but, but just maybe, just, just-
So by the big hospital-
Just answer, hold on, I'll lose my train of thought.
Okay.
What do the, what does the write-off situation have to do with what you're going to pay for? That's their deal.
Because when, it is their deal, but it's a fact of public access to healthcare. So if we want Valley Baptist to still be here and be able to provide all that free healthcare, we've got to give them enough so that when they subtract their write-off, the net between the two is probably very close. Now, Valley Baptist would have to help us with that.
Am you okay with all this? Because I mean, I'm trying to follow this and-
I'm sorry, I, if I give Valley Baptist more money to start with on their, on a profitable thing like a C-section or a cardiac procedure, but they've got this big write-off, that means their bottom line is lower than what we gave them, right? Because we're not reimbursing their indigent care. Whereas in the eight-bed hospital setting, there's very little write-off, and even though we give them less, by the time the Valley Baptist attracts their write-off, what they net is about the same.
But Valley Baptist may not be a good comparable, because they are nonprofit, which also in turn means that the other hospitals pay on their ad valorem taxes, whatever they're appraised at by the appraisal district, and Valley Baptist does not do that. So they have some built-in security there in the millions of dollars a year.
All the large hospitals, like for instance, in Austin area, you have St. David's-
Minimal.
They do pay.
They don't pay anything in Brownsville, which is a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars a year that would come to the county, plus the rest of the school districts and everything else in Brownsville.
I asked that question, and they do pay.
Oh, they do pay some. They, because they own other facilities and other areas in the county that are not hospital-related, and they pay on those, but they don't pay on their hospital facility, in fact, they don't even pay on the professional billings they own here, own here in Brownsville.
You have a Columbia hospital here, and you have Valley Baptist.
Yeah, but if we can get back-
I bet they're very, very close.
Yeah, the information that we have here is based on, on historical, right? This is not y'all, this is this, so there's, I mean, there's a huge disparity here with this one, already. I mean, Mr. Ramirez, even, Ramirez, right? Ramirez, even, even with, with, with our prior provider, there's a huge disparity between the, the services that you're all getting paid, right? So are you saying that the, the, what Blue Cross is offering you is even lower than what Mutual of Omaha was offering you?
Absolutely correct.
Okay, and, and by how many, God, give me the number, just how many, by how many points?
The difference between Mutual and-
Yeah, how many points of difference?
And Blue Cross.
Well, whatever, whatever they're offering is, they're offering you X, and you were getting X plus or minus, so what, what is that, what is that, that margin?
Just so that you have a benchmark, let me just say that under Texas True Choice, somebody mentioned the Medicare threshold. Medicare threshold is- Medicare threshold is basically what the hospitals throughout the country get paid through a DRG method of payment or reimbursement. Using that threshold, I would say that we were, through Mutual of Omaha, 150% of Medicare or so, rough estimate. Under Blue Cross, we're barely a little bit above Medicaid. Medicaid reimbursement is very little, very minimal. So, you're talking about probably 60% below Medicare threshold. So, you can see the gap between 140% above Medicare and 60% below Medicaid. Or, excuse me, Medicare.
And where was the other hospital using that same scenario? Were they also at 150 and y'all were even? I mean, are you trying to suggest that with the prior provider, y'all were at a comparable level with Valley Baptist?
No. What I'm suggesting right now basically is that the reimbursement that y'all were discussing that we took for the past 15 months, we lost a million dollars on the condition that they were gonna come back to us and give us a better rate. We came to the discussion table and they did not. Therefore, we had to cancel. We didn't want to cancel the contract. But if you lose a million dollars in a period of 15 months, that's not good business.
Well, that's what I, that's what I thought-
It depends on how much you made.
That is what I thought a few agenda items ago. I didn't want to lose a million dollars, I mean, but, but no, let me ask, I mean, I guess I'm still a little confused. I mean, I mean, you're all, you know, if y'all do not want to go into the deal, you don't go into the deal. I mean, that's just, I mean, that's business and obviously we respect that. But I want to make sure that there's not some deliberate reason to keep y'all out of this. I mean, I don't know, and I'm just, I don't know, I don't know.
Well, one of the things that I think should be looked at very closely too is that you want to give the population, the employees, an option of where to go. That's a choice I feel that is very important to the patient. And by not allowing that, that makes it very difficult.
So, are you saying that if we enter into this agreement, your hospital is not going to accept our employees' Blue Cross, Blue Shield insurance?
They will not allow us to do that.
No, you choose not to accept the rates they offer though, right? I mean, they will allow you, but you've chosen to not accept whatever rates they're offering.
Right, because if we were to do a comparison, which is what we were talking about, there is a big discrepancy between what they're offering and what we need in order to have a reasonable return on the services that we provide in order to continue to provide services.
So, it's not cost-effective for you to accept their rate?
It's not cost-effective because of the fact that the reimbursement that they're providing is less, or let me put it this way, their reimbursement is approximately Medicaid rates, which is-
So, Medicaid rates are not acceptable to you all?
Well, the thing with Medicaid rates is that you go with volume as well.
You what?
Volume.
Yeah, but I didn't hear that.
What is that?
Volume with additional, with a population. Here in the valley, your population is a lot of Medicare/Medicaid population.
You do accept Medicaid and Medicare at your facility?
Yeah, we accept all pairs.
Well, let me, allow me just to suggest the dilemma that we're in. The dilemma that we're in is that we have about a week and a half before the contract with Mutual of Omaha expires. And I don't know if in this week and a half, we have time to go back and try to renegotiate with another vendor. And I don't want to be in a situation where, nobody does, I don't think, our employees are gonna have a lapse in coverage. And so, we have a problem in the salary matrix, in the RFP matrix, I think that we presented a week, a couple of weeks. There was a big gap between your recommended carrier and the next one, if I remember right. I mean-
That is correct. There was a considerable differential. The Blue Cross was the only company that offered a firm contract. When we talk about what would it take to finish this out, the other ones, we have to go through claim disclosure and they have to review it and then accept and that's a significant issue. One other thing I'd like to point out, Mr. Ramírez, you can concur with this. We are talking about in-network when we refer to the Blue Cross contract. However, this is an option where a person may choose to be out of network. Benefits aren't paid as well as in-network, but out of network is available. You would accept somebody on an out-of-network basis?
Yeah, that is correct.
Usually, that would mean a little higher copay for the recipient of services. So, if an individual chooses to use an out-of-network hospital-
As a choice.
Right.
Now, what I really like, this is the first time Mr. Ramírez had seen, or Merrick, I'm sorry. First time he had seen this, but what's really bothering me is why was this gross charge so high by Blue Cross, by Mutual of Omaha compared to how they're actually paying you? I didn't put this together. This is what came from the insurance.
Right, and I wouldn't be able to answer that right now.
Because-
That would affect-
Excuse me, I need to be facing the camera.
You all could work out your deal there.
It will affect the individual because he's gotta charge his gross price and- Right. Sometimes, there's not a strong relation between the gross price and the real price. For example, somebody comes in with cash, you probably give them a discount.
The industry has what they call a sliding fee.
So, there is a choice. The employees will have a choice as to whether they want to be in-network or out of network.
Just like we do today with medical offices with Mutual. There are certain individuals that are in the network, certain are out of the network. And if you use an out-of-network, you have a higher deductible. That's just standard operating procedure for healthcare.
And how does the insurance company do their portion of payment if you go out of networks? If I go out of network, I have a higher deductible, I pay it, how does the insurance company reimburse the hospital on what basis? At a higher rate, at a lower rate?
At an out-of-network basis.
At how they bill?
Excuse me, could you rephrase that question, Commissioner Woods?
If I go out of network and I pay a higher deductible, how does the insurance company reimburse the hospital? For what they bill or-
They will be reimbursed on the basis of the gross charges that are submitted. Now, they may do some kind of an audit review process of that bill, but it starts out with the gross bill coming in and then if the insurance company should decide that they want to do further review to determine the reasonableness of the charges, they will. But it starts out at the gross billed amount and then they apply the deductible and the co-insurance against that gross billed amount.
So, you could end up paying, the insurance company could end up paying more.
Hector, this is Hector Licon at Blue Cross.
Everything they've said is correct, especially at that, but there's a different way that we handle it at Blue Cross. We're probably the only carrier that has contracts for both in-network and out-of-network. The par network that he called our safety net or, how did you say? Our wraparound, our choice network. About 80% or more of providers in the state belong to that par network. So, if they happen to go to a physician that is not in the network, most likely they will be in the par network where they will get discounts. We actually provide discounts both in and out. That is a unique feature. The par discounts have been part of the Blue Cross, and I've been with Blue Cross 27 years or 28 years, okay? Par discounts have been in existence with us forever, even before PPOs came around. We were the only carrier that negotiated with hospitals for many, many, many years, okay? Up until the HMOs and PPOs started formulating and then everybody created their networks and then they started negotiating. We've never gotten rid of those two networks. That's why we call it the wrap or the safety net for our large network. So, to tell you, if you happen to have employees that do go out of network, you will also enjoy the majority of the time with discounts out of network as well. Not as deep, but you have discounts.
Hector, we need to clarify for the Commissioners' Court though. They will be terminating that participating contract.
They will be terminating that, so they will not be able to-
Question is, will you pay on the basis of that gross bill or will it be subject to some kind of an audit process?
If I remember correctly, I think we pay on what? On reasonable and customary, that's what I was gonna say. It's paid on reasonable and customary, okay?
And how would reasonable and customary be determined?
That is a, every insurance company has their own, what do you call it? For lack of a better word? Charge masters, okay? For reasonable and customary.
For by procedure.
Exactly. And another thing I wanted to say also, the gentleman made a statement saying that it is not fair for the population of the state, I mean, of the city, not to have the option to go there. They do have the option by going out of network. Also, we do have 40,000 Blue Cross members that have been Blue Cross members for quite a while and we haven't had any problems and they haven't had access to that facility.
Your specifically referring to Cameron County?
Yeah, Cameron County, okay?
So, that's what the federal and the state employees-
Every, all employees that carry a Blue Cross card, state employees, everybody.
And your statement of you not having had any problems-
We haven't had any issues or anything brought up to our attention-
With that particular hospital?
Because of that facility is not in the network, they take and not get services. They've gotten and received services from all our other providers that are available to you.
Because we haven't talked about physicians yet and I know lots of physicians that have problems with Blue Cross/Blue Shield.
Like they do with any other company.
Yeah.
Okay?
Just sometimes a little worse.
And you can talk to many of them and they'll tell you stories from all directions. But at the same time, we do have, by a state-produced study that they do it almost every year, who has the highest, what do you call it, stamp of approval by, let's say, physicians? And we do, okay? We always come up higher than that. There are always going to be some doctors or somebody that is not happy with a particular reimbursement of whatever that might be. That'll never change in anything we do.
Because those are the guys who are gonna be providing, generally us, with the information in order to monitor how y'all are doing.
Believe me, we do monitor all that and we do have, we put out to the communities, to the medical community, surveys on an ongoing basis. We're very active on that. I'm not in provider relations, even though at one time in my career with Blue Cross, I was in provider relations for three years. I haven't in the last 10, 15 years, so I can't say exactly how they handle it or can I speak to that. The reason why I'm saying what I'm saying is because I'm familiar with this topic of conversation, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Hector. Does this remember anything more on the out-of-network?
The only thing really that I just wanted for the court and the judge and the Commissioners to be aware of was that, from our point of view, was that a C-section, whether it's done at the other two hospitals or whether it's done at our facility, the cost that we incur is the same. We should not be penalized for that.
And I agree.
And I agree.
Well, you might agree now, but if you're flown in with brain problems or an aneurysm and you need the care immediately, you want to go to a facility that has that regardless of what the cost is.
Yeah, but I think the, yeah, you're right, but I think the challenge that we have though right now is that our insurance is gonna expire in 11 days or 10 days and we have to make a decision today. I don't know if we have time to go back and reevaluate, you know, who's, and then there's no guarantee that the, that second entity, whoever it may be, is gonna not do the same thing with this hospital that they're doing. They may not be able to cut the same deal. I don't know that. We don't have that kind of time. That's a problem.
And you may give up 10 to 15% on the entire cost in order to gain a few percentage for one small for-profit hospital. And I think the thing that, as somebody who looks after counties statewide, what I consider is that, the gentleman makes the point, he should not be penalized, but isn't it penalizing the citizens of Cameron County that they don't provide the same level of service as your big hospitals where they have a trauma center and they give away a lot of medical care to people who can't afford it? They're serving strictly a for-profit market and doing it very well, but they get to keep all of that. Your big hospitals don't get to keep anywhere near all of it.
Thank you. That would be comments on the Brownsville Doctors Hospital.
I'm sorry?
Would you please? I'd like to hear what your recommendation is.
Well, we were gonna cover all the other items that you wanted with the back figures and all that. Our recommendation, my recommendation is that we have 96% of the PPO providers that we had with Mutual are gonna be on this PPO. There's only a few doctors and they're gonna try to reach those. But as a whole, the providers that we had with Mutual of Omaha, we're gonna have 96% of them still remaining in this PPO. And we had the same issue with Mutual of Omaha. When they first started, they didn't have all the providers that we had in our previous PPO. So, they came in and told us that we would start negotiating with all those providers that we thought would be necessary. We asked the employees to give us names of doctors that were not on the provider list so we could get them on the provider list. And any time you have a change, there's gonna be some that are picked up and some that are lost. And that's what happens.
When we refer to the 96%, what we did is we had the top 100 physicians and we did a match of those and out of the 100, there were six that we didn't have a match on. And we know of only one that had declined the Blue Cross contract. And we've asked them to go back and for the other five, we've asked them to send out proposals for them to join the Blue Cross network. So, from the physician's side, excellent matchup. From the facility's side, a very, an excellent matchup with the exception of the Brownsville Doctors Hospital. And it's unfortunate that, you know, bad relations started when you, they entered into that participating contract 16 months ago. And I-
But we had nothing to do with that.
You had nothing to do with that, absolutely, absolutely.
Our RFP had nothing to do with that.
Absolutely right.
You know, we're just trying to find the product so we can offer our employees the best coverage within our budget.
Right, right. And what we're bringing to you today after the negotiations would be benefits comparable, almost identical to what you had before. That was a major negotiation item. That's been cleared up. You're gonna have the same deductibles, the same copays, the same prescription drug copays. We will not have the mandated generic that was originally proposed. It's cleaned up. So, that part, feel very good about. The other part that is so important is that, in my opinion, on the basis of their performance guarantee they've offered, your claim cost should be going down. And that's a 20% differential. In the handout material that we just, for the record, like to give to you, and I just want to spend a few minutes going through a couple of pages here, we've got- I just wanna spend a few minutes going through a couple pages here, we've got some decisions to make as to the deductible level that we wanna use for our specific stop loss and then we have the, um, issue of with or without agent services.
This is the same one you emailed, Monet?
The one we got emailed on?
Is this the same one as that was emailed?
Yes.
Yeah, this, this should be the same as what was emailed to you earlier. We've not changed anything.
I used up all my paper printing it out.
I printed it out too.
I wanted to send it to him, so I won't use no paper.
This was just in case you didn't get it.
No, sir. It's an important issue.
I have it.
So i- if, if I could go to the page one-
The table of contents or?
Well, we have, no, well, the table of contents didn't have a page number.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so now we go within. And so we go to page number one under the table of contents, uh, is that we're comparing what you currently have, this is a financial summary, uh, against, uh, one proposal from Blue Cross which would be on a direct basis, the same specific deductible is what you have today. That's for the individual claims of a hundred thousand dollars, uh, and then there would be another over on the far right-hand side, which would be if we have the agent services. So when we come down to the total maximum cost, the two bottom rows down there, uh, your total maximum cost consisting of the fixed cost, uh, which was one million, six ninety-nine, oh, thirty-eight under Mutual of Omaha, would now become one million, eight thirty-eight, seven thirty-seven, uh, under a direct contract. Or if it were to use agent services, it would be one million, eight eighty-seven. That's a forty-eight thousand, nine sixty additional cost on fixed costs. For maximum claims, because of the perceived improvement in the discounts from what you had before, your maximum claim cost will be reduced. It was, under Mutual of Omaha, nine million, six forty-seven, eight sixty-two, under the Blue Cross either program with or without agent, it would be eight million, six thirty-five, four eighteen. So the total maximum cost, if you were to budget up to that maximum amount, would be a, a reduction from eleven million, three forty-six, nine hundred to ten million, four seventy-four, one fifty-five. That's a reduction of about seven point seven percent.
Javier, are you aware of this possible reduction when you're configuring our budget?
W- was I aware direct?
No, I'm asking Javier.
I have the information.
It's calculated into the information you provided us earlier?
No.
Okay.
The numbers are the same.
Well, no, we're gonna be spending a million dollars less.
We can reduce our contribution by seven point seven percent, is what you're saying, John, right?
Oh, I'm saying that. Now, now, within this information, Commissioner Garza, you had asked for some financial information, how's our plan doing? And you've been running below that maximum cost and I've got some data on that and we can talk about that later if you, uh, desire. So, um, this is a plus. We, we see the claim cost going down, but if I could move quickly to what I think is important-
I think, may I ask a question?
Yeah.
By comparing the three different options that we have before us-
Oh, you're, you're talking about the one fifty versus, the hundred versus one fifty?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it, it, am I looking at the numbers correctly and seeing that going from proposal, and I'm just gonna take proposal one and the one hundred-
Uh-huh.
Stop-loss deductible.
Right.
And, and look at the maximum cost and compare that across the board for the others.
Yes.
The difference is four thousand dollars roughly between one and two, or page one and page two, and then the difference is, uh, gosh, maybe what, what's the difference on page three, maybe? I don't have a calculator, but maybe like-
Well, yeah, I, I know where you're headed on that. And what you do in choosing, in making this decision about the deductible, you're trading the hard dollars of premium, the fixed cost that's gonna go out the door, to the softer dollars, which would be your maximum claim amount. So by the amount that the premium goes down, it's shifted into the maximum claim cost. So you raise your maximum claim cost by about the same amount that you pull down your fixed premium cost.
Well, not really, 'cause it seems-
Well, it's, they tried to make it about the same and, and what, what you're dealing with is some rounding, uh, but it's, it's close. And, and the intent is to move that, that premium amount that you're gonna save into the maximum claim amount because you're increasing the deductible, which means that the amount that is subject to the aggregate is gonna have more claims flowing against it.
Right.
So they're just trading dollars. But what's important is you're trading higher dollars for softer dollars. Now, if you would work with me to go to page fifteen in our handout material, this is my effort to try and, uh, illustrate, um, a hundred thousand dollar deductible based on your past claim history against a hundred and fifty thousand dollar deductible against a two hundred thousand deductible. So I, I've got three full plan years and one partial plan year, which is two thousand six, two thousand seven, which is ten months. So I've got three full years and one partial year. Over this forty-six month period, you've had thirty-three claims that exceeded the hundred thousand dollar deductible. And then I show by each plan year how it would've worked out, the premium that's being charged now, applying it against those actual claims that we had in the past. For example, if, if I look at the year two thousand three, two thousand four, you had seven claims and the total gross amount was eight seventy-two, six seventy-six. The amount that was reimbursed under the hundred thousand deductible was one seventy-two, six seventy-six. You would've paid in premium of nine seventy-nine, two hundred. You would've paid in more premium than what you got back in claim recovery by the amount of eight oh six, five twenty-four. Uh, you go to the year you're in right now where you've had eight claims so far and you've received stop-loss reimbursement of one million, three fifty-two, two eighty, but you paid in, under this new premium that's being proposed, you would've paid in nine seventy-two, two hundred. So you'd be ahead, uh, by three seventy-three, oh, eighty. So when I put the forty-six months together, I accumulate thirty-three claims and your reimbursement under a hundred thousand dollar deductible would be three million, three sixty-three, four ninety-four. The premium, accumulating the premium for each of those years would be three million, nine sixteen, eight hundred. So you would've paid in more premium than you get back in claims by five fifty-three, three oh six. If I move all the way over to the two, two hundred thousand dollar deductible, you would pay in premium of a million, eight fifty-four, nine ninety-six, but you'd receive recovery of a million, seven fourteen, oh, fifty-two. So you'd be ahead under the two hundred thousand dollar deductible rather than the hundred thousand because you would get a greater recovery in relation to the premium. And so instead of being out five fifty-three, three oh six, you'd only be out one forty-nine oh four. So if you were to see that you wanted to take a little more risk exposure and put it under the self-funded aggregate umbrella rather than the specific premium recovery, this one gives you a better return, the, the two hundred thousand deductible.
Would that be your recommendation?
That would be my recommendation.
Makes sense.
Well, it's like if you, you know, the higher your deductible, the lower your premium.
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly, but I'm trying to quantify it and, and we've had the value of some claim history and your claim history, as I look at it, where your exposure, if you've had a couple really, really bad claims that got almost to a million dollars, that's unusual. But with the two hundred thousand deduct, you're gonna be protected against that catastrophic.
That's where it really costs you in those big ones.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, and, and, and that's where you want your recovery back-
Right.
-from the insurance company.
Your maximum exposure.
Yes, yes, yes. Um, the, the nice thing about this relation that you've had in the past with Mutual of Omaha and that you'll continue to ha- the same process will work with Blue Cross, is that we have the same company as your administrator and your insurance company so that when you go to get the recovery, it's within a matter of days rather than filing with a separate stop-loss insurance company and then waiting months for it to come back. And so that same process will be continued and with these catastrophic claims that we've seen, that is critically important for your cash flow. So that would be my recommendation. So then we're left with, uh, the decision on the agent services and to assist in that, uh, if we would go to page twelve. This is the information on page twelve that was in the proposal submitted by Texas Association of Counties using Blue Cross, uh, by the agent as to, uh, what he would do in response to some questions that we had asked of him. And, uh, so there are attachments to this, which would be his E and O insurance, which is a large amount. It's a three million dollar professional liability for insurance services. Typically, we might see a million dollar limit, that's at three million dollar. A reasonable deductible at ten thousand. Uh, then we also asked for a copy of his insurance license, that's on page fourteen. Um, he's been licensed a very long period of time since nineteen seventy-five. Uh, and as he points out, uh, in response to question number F, uh, he's been in the health, health insurance industry for over forty-five years. And, uh, then he's also answered other questions about his relationship with the insurance company. Um, on, on that issue, um, I'm neutral and, uh, it, it-
Well, how much, how much does it cost to use an agent or not to use an agent? I mean, that's gonna come out-
It is forty-eight thousand dollars.
About fifty thousand dollars.
Fifty thousand dollars, yeah.
Forty-eight, nine sixty. Okay, so what, so we decide whether, and, and what benefit is there to using an agent versus going direct? And I mean, and is that benefit worth fifty thousand dollars?
Well, that's, uh, I, I, when, when I was presenting the, um, uh, RFP to the Commissioners' Court, uh, I heard, uh, some of the Commissioners tell me that they, they felt a local person to call was, was important, uh, so, uh, but I can all-
But see, but now, but now we have a value that we can assess to it, you know, the, then, and the, the, the decision the court has to make, is that value worth forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars? Four nine, that, that's, that's the value that we're gonna have to pay, right? Or is Blue Cross paying for that?
No, 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 no.
See, that's fifty thousand, yeah.
Yeah, we have to pay.
That we have to pay.
That is correct.
And so we have to judge whether the benefit-
Is worth that.
Is worth fifty thousand dollars.
Yes. Now, I will point out one more thing.
Somebody talking?
That is a per year.
That's correct.
Yeah, per, per year, yes.
That's a per year.
I will point out one more thing. There is a difference, uh, between the Mutual of Omaha and what we have today with Blue Cross as a subcontractor under Texas Association of Counties. So you've got a layer that you didn't have before that may be part of that service element that, that we're talking about here. So, um, Mr. Norwood, who gave a presentation, uh, talked about his experience, uh, with the Texas Association of Counties, uh, their employee benefit pool, which has, I'm told, over half of the counties in their, in their pool. Then we also have the Blue Cross representatives that, uh, we have two in the audience today, but there will also be service people that will work out of the Corpus Christi office, I believe, or, or Harlingen.
Harlingen.
Yeah, they have a Harlingen office too. So you're going to have some service elements that would be comparable to the Mutual of Omaha and that there was a service person in the Brownsville area, the service person will be in the Harlingen area. That would be someone that can come out and talk to the employees.
So we will have somebody in Harlingen?
Yes.
That's already included in the price without having to spend the extra forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Yeah.
No, I understand. I understand. I understand.
So why do we need-
So then why, I mean, I guess, but, so why would we, why would we, and I'm, I'm just playing devil's advocate here, then why would we need another agent of record if we have somebody in, in Harlingen? I mean, we can use that fifty grand someplace else. Why do we have to spend it, is I guess my question? And are we getting a benefit by spending that fifty thousand we have? And I, I know, I know the TAC folks and, you know, I just met you all, but, you know, why would we wanna do that? That's my question, why would we want to do that? I wanna hear from somebody that it's a benefit having somebody in Brownsville versus having somebody in Harlingen.
For the record, could I read in his response, the agent's response, because that's what we have to go on?
Well, but the agent has a vested interest, but, okay.
And I'm neutral.
So does the representative in Brownsville.
The answer to, uh, question D, agent's relation with insurance company or service provider, uh, his response was, "We have been working with BCBS, which would be Blue Cross Blue Shield, and quoting the group medical program. They have programs available that can bring discounts and money savings to the group health program, which all would be disclosed in this proposal." That, that's his answer to, what's his relation, what does he do with the insurance company? Um, then the next-
And I, and I have, I have the utmost of respect-
An agent of record.
Yeah, I have the utmost of respect for the agent, that's not the issue.
Professionally, I do too. I, I've been doing work in the valley for nineteen years.
Yeah, but, but, but the issue to me is, 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 is the benefit that is brought to the table, you know, worth another almost fifty thousand dollars or can we get the same service in a price that's already included by dealing with the folks in Harlingen and TAC and everybody else? That's my only thing, I mean, do we wanna spend another fifty thousand dollars to, to be a nice guy to somebody?
Could I just, for the record, finish the last response?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, uh, this would be, uh, answer to question E, agent services to be provided, which is zeroing in on, uh, why are we gonna spend fifty thousand? The answer is, "As the agent of the county for over twenty years, I have worked closely with the insurance carriers and network providers to bring the best possible rates and discounts. Troubleshoot as planned was implemented, renewal and provided, utilization and claim updates to the county."
Yep.
That's coming from him.
That's, yes, this is his statement and I just wanted to read it into the record because he's not here.
Mr. Varejao, can I ask you a question? Uh, in the past, uh, with the Mutual of Omaha, have we had to go to Mr. Cavazos for anything or, or, I notice that I get an email from your office letting us know that there's a representative here on a certain day of the month, uh, if anybody has any questions on any type of, uh, excuse me, claims, uh, to bring them in. Do they usually work out whatever problems there are?
Well, the, the lady that comes from, is from Mutual of Omaha, is Letty Martinez, and she comes because employees have questions. Some of them don't like to talk to somebody on the phone and, and they wanna speak, somebody speaks Spanish and somebody they recognize and, and so she started coming and, and our request that, that she come because she would have access to the network, claim network. Uh, it was not wise for me or any of my staff to have access to that preview information 'cause that's very, very private. So by having an agent of the company to do that, it's, it's always a lot better. Uh, my relations with, mostly were directly with Mutual Omaha in regards to, uh, employee assistance program or, uh, somebody was, was dropped from the, from, from the roles or, or wasn't added to the roles on time- program, or somebody was dropped from the roles, or wasn't added to the roles on time. Most of my relation is directly with the administrator because that's what I deal with in enrollments and all that. My relation with the agent is normally none. The only one that would have a relation with the agent would be the Commissioners' Court because, as he says there, is to bring reports and whatever. But as far as me dealing with the agent, I don't.
The answer to the question is, when we have or any of our employees have any questions, we are usually able to iron a mouth with the representative from the insurance company?
No, we deal directly with the company. We deal directly with the company. The agent that comes in here, the representative, is from Mutual of Omaha, and she deals directly with Mutual.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, most of the emails, yeah. All right, so what is, so what's, so what's before us? Do we have to take two separate votes, one on the, I guess, on the deductible?
Yes.
Okay, then one on, well, I guess, three votes, one. Well, all we need is one with all three components. Yeah, we can do it that way, if you want to do it that way. What's your recommendation? We've paid you good money to hear one.
With due consideration to the discussion that I've heard here, my recommendation would be to go direct and.
Proposal one, with which deductible?
Proposal one with the $200,000 deductible. And then on a direct basis.
Well, I had already made up mine.
Yeah, but I wanted it on the record.
That would be my recommendations.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate the information provided because that makes it very easy to decide, actually.
Thank you.
So the recommendation from our consultant is to go with Blue Cross Blue Shield, direct contact without using the agent, and using the $200,000 deductible? Is that what it is?
That is correct.
Okay. That's your recommendation. Manuel, do you concur?
Yes. But technically, it's the Texas Association of Counties Employee Benefit Risk Pool, using the services of Blue Cross Blue Shield. Because you're going to sign, we're going to ask you to sign an interlocal agreement with Texas Association of Counties.
I got you. Okay.
And I'll make that motion, Judge.
Okay, that was a motion, that was a motion by Commissioner Tamayo. Do I have a second by Commissioner Gatsa? Any further discussion? I ask that you continue your attempts to try to negotiate a better deal with Brownsville Surgical Hospital. I don't want to throw out the baby with the bathwater, but, and time is of the essence, but I would recommend that you really, really try to work with them, you know, as best that you can to try to bring them into the, you know, trying to bring them into the network. Okay? I ask that of you all. Yes, sir.
But don't compromise our bottom line.
Yeah, that's right.
Without compromising the bottom line, yeah.
That's right. Yes, sir.
Pardon me?
That's all we can ask.
Good. And I will participate in that, and I want to work the aspect of baseline Medicare allowable, and then what is an appropriate percentage to go above that.
That's all we can ask, and that's fair.
And that's what I heard today, that he was working with.
Okay. That he was willing to do that, too?
Pardon?
That he was willing to do that, too?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Is that four to one?
Yes.
Okay. Item 33, consideration approval of interlocal agreement between Texas Association of Counties and Cameron County for the administration of Cameron County Health Benefits for September 1, 2007 to August 31, 2008. Move by Commissioner Tamayo, by Commissioner Gatsa, second by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion?
And that agreement is something that you will provide, right?
Yes, and Legal has reviewed it, and we will provide it to you.
Okay. I didn't have one of those, but if Legal has, Legal?
Yes.
You've reviewed it and you feel comfortable with it?
Yes, Delvia, Delvia has reviewed it with input from me, and we feel comfortable with it.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries, item 34, consideration approval of contract between Interface EAP and Cameron County for administration of Cameron County Employee Assistance Program, EAP RFP, number 070604 for September 1, 2007 to August 31, 2008. Do I hear a motion for approval?
Shall move.
Move by Commissioner Benavides. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tamayo, discussion.
Manuel? Go ahead.
Could I mail you this agreement, the ones that I have here? I have them on my, on my internet and on my email, and can I mail you a copy of them?
Yes.
Is that okay, or do you want a hard copy?
No.
Okay.
I don't.
No, that's fine.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries, item 35, consideration authorization to proof conceptual design and budget for Laredo's Outdoor Recreational Community Park.
What I've placed in the background is the budget for the project. Now, this is worst-case scenario. This is in the event that we don't get the award for the grant from Texas Parks and Wildlife. So if we do get it, of course, it'll be by, we can reduce it by 400,000.
Okay.
This is the budget we have, though.
Yes, sir. The budget that we, the amount that we budgeted from the seal was 1.4 million dollars.
Yes.
Any, any, any questions on the design?
We've been through it for months now.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion for approval.
Move by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Gatsa. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries, item 36, discussion and possible action regarding the county, state, and federal legislative agenda. Nothing? Do I hear a motion to table?
Table.
Move by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Wood. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries?
Move to adjourn.
Do I hear a motion to move to adjourn by Commissioner Gatsa, second by Commissioner Tamayo. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries? God save this honorable court.